I am calling to order the meeting of the Willett City Council of August 22 at about 6:32. And we will begin with a pledge to the flag. So.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And we will have a roll call from Kathy, please.
Yes.
Here.
Yes.
I am here.
Here.
Okay. I think we'll go directly to the first item and then have other public comments because if there are any public comments, you can't get there right now. So this first item is a proclamation celebrating Peace Day, which is coming on September 21st. And I think I will read this proclamation and then we will hear a wonderful musical tribute to Peace Day. Proclamation of the Willett City Council recognizing City of Willett as a peace city and recognizing International Day of Peace on September 21st. And this is something cities are doing around not only our country but around the world. There are thousands of cities. Whereas the people of the world and our own community are comprised of a multitude of races, ethnicities, spiritual beliefs, gender and sexual identities and cultures. And whereas in the course of living together on this planet and in this town, we have witnessed wars, injuries, and divisions based upon these characteristics. And whereas these varied characteristics make up a beautiful cultural and linguistic diversity of which we should be proud. And whereas it is to the benefit of all that we live peacefully together on this planet and in this town. And whereas these varied characteristics make up a beautiful culture. Did I just say that? Yes. Whereas by living peacefully, we can better attend to issues such as healthcare, education, the economy, and the environment that affect us all. And whereas policies to address common issues such as healthcare and education, et cetera, are best developed collaboratively in ways that serve all people. And whereas we desire to live in peace with our brothers and sisters locally and internationally and to work towards equality and justice for all. This is the last where it is. We unite in the desire to end violence, hatred, oppression, hunger, and poverty in our community and in the world. Therefore, we, the City of Willett, do hereby proclaim our town a peace city in league with thousands of cities and towns across the globe. And we proclaim International Day of Peace, September 21st, our local celebration of peace building along with peace-loving pieces people all over the world. So I will present this to Don Lewis after you have sung for us.
He'll never make it up.
In honor of this wonderful day.
So, yeah, I'm representing all of these people who are part of the Amadou Corral. I'm Don Lewis, I'm the director of the Amadou Corral. And we have made peace an important part of our mission statement, who we are, for years and years. And so this is really a great thing that you're doing for the city to support the International Day of Peace is wonderful. And I just want to let you know that we are doing a celebration on September 21st in the Red Road Park at four in the afternoon. And we're inviting anyone to come. It'll be a free event and we're hoping especially a lot of children will come and their parents. So one more thing I'd like to mention is that there is an initiative started by a woman in London, England called One Day One Choir, which is she has signed up over 1,200 choirs all over the world to sing on Peace Day. And this is a worldwide event. It's going to be it's filmed, it's they make a video of it. And so we're taking part in that. There are from every continent, every possible imaginable place, schools, churches, everywhere. So we're wanting to be a part of that. So we're going to sing you a little song to support our peace resolution here in Los Angeles. This is a South African song called Tumamina. The words mean send me Lord, send me, I want to be active, I want to take a stand, send me Lord.
(singing) Tumamina.
(singing) Tumamina.
(singing) Tumamina.
(singing) Tumamina.
(singing) So manna.
(singing) Free the children.
(singing) Free the children.
(singing) Free the children.
(singing) Heal our homeland.
(singing) Heal our homeland.
(singing) Heal our homeland.
(singing) Heal our homeland.
(singing) Bring us justice.
(singing) Bring us justice.
(singing) Bring us justice.
(singing) Bring us justice.
(singing) Heal us now.
(singing) Save our freedom.
(singing) Save our freedom.
(singing) Save our freedom.
(singing) Save our freedom.
(singing) Heal us now.
(singing) Heal our families.
(singing) Heal our families.
(singing) Heal our families.
(singing) Heal our families.
(singing) Heal us now.
(singing) Heal our planet.
(singing) Heal our planet.
(singing) Heal our planet.
(singing) Heal our planet.
(singing) Heal us now.
(singing) Tumamina.
(singing) Tumamina.
(singing) Tumamina.
(singing) Tumamina.
(singing) So manna.
I just want to say I'm usually in the chorus singing and it was incredible to just sit here and receive that and very emotional. And thank you so much.
Thank you.
Beautiful. And I'd like to give each of our council members and our city manager one of these invitation posters. This is a semi-final poster. You want to pass me down there? Because Don has been the main organizer and they're still pulling together. Thank you all.
Beautiful.
And I think it's a world record for how many people are at city council.
But stick around, stick around. Nicely done, really appreciate it.
My pleasure. Nice to see you Jennifer.
That was a peaceful way to start.
And the event last year was really multicultural and multi-generational and we're doing we're hoping for exactly the same kind of represent the entire breadth and depth of our community. Thank you. All right. Now we do have an opportunity for public communications. These are for addressing the council on any issue that's not on the agenda but that pertains to city matters and we accept any criticisms or whatever you want to say to the city council during public comment period. If it's on the agenda, wait for that and otherwise we can't take action on items that are brought up. But yes, please come ahead and give your name and you have two.
Hi, I'm Margaret Solera. I'm the city manager for the City of Lakeport. And I have with me our police officer Brad Rasmussen and our public works writer Ryder. And we're here, first of all, that was such a beautiful, beautiful song, that was wonderful. We were here to thank city council, your city manager Stephanie. During our event, we had six days, but our entire population was evacuated, we had a mandatory evacuation in Lakeport. Right away, staff was sent to assist us. We had four public works personnel there. We had four, it was about four police officers, I can't remember, but there was police officers and public works that were all there for six days. It was, we didn't do it without the help of our neighbors. And we are so grateful that you were there to help us and we just appreciate it very much and I wanted to make sure to thank you. So thank you very much.
I was just in Lakeport two days ago on a business thing and we had lunch overlooking the lake, which is in my estimation, one of the most beautiful spots in the state. And I was very, I didn't know what I was going to expect, you know, when we drove into town. I was very pleased to see, I didn't see any damages, I hope, I don't think there was.
We were very, very fortunate. Fire was right at our back door, but fortunately it didn't make it into town. So, and the town was evacuated, citizens were amazing, they cooperated and left. And we have a bunch of looters, but the different agencies that were there helping our police officers, we don't believe there was really any thing that was taken. They were all caught before that happened. So that's why it was so helpful to have all the different assistance there.
It was just nice to see that it didn't look like anything had gone wrong.
No, we were very fortunate. Electricity was only out for like three or four hours, so people came home, their food was fine in refrigerators and freezer and we kept all the water and sewer going, you know, we had generators keeping things going. So really, other than the ash and the smoke, smoke and ash for still quite a few days after that, the city was spared and we were very, very fortunate. So we have a lot to be thankful for. It was, it did feel like you were in a Twilight Zone or some sci-fi movie with nobody in town and it was dark and with the ash and, but we were just very fortunate. And so thank you again. And without, you know, your help and other cities' help, it would have been very difficult for us to survive those days and keep things going. So thank you again, I appreciate that.
And I just wanted to make sure that Scott Warnock and Kathy Moorhead, they sprang into action as soon as they found out and it was without, you know, their participation. It was just incredible. They were just like, we're on it, we've got it, we're done.
Thank you, yeah, we very, very appreciate it.
Thank you.
We're all here to help each other and glad we could be helpful. Any other members of the public wish to address us?
Hi.
Hello, I'm Kirk Crane, this is my wife Lisa Reed. We bought property on 1470 Bechtel. We are in the process of building a house, getting a permitting process and everything like that. We're wanting to live there in a trailer. Why our permitting process is being done? We were told that it's a city ordinance that we're not allowed to. We're not wanting to change the ordinance, we're just wanting a permissible basis to where if you are building a house, you're able to live there or something comes up, you're able to live there in a trailer. So we're here to ask permission from the city council. Why we're building our house if we can live in a trailer.
Something that you would be taking into consideration, whether it's an addition to your ordinance or whether it's changing the ordinance to allow people that do buy abused property and want to build a house that saves some money, you know, be able to go over their, you know, day-to-day plans, keep their property up kept during the whole process.
And we are, we cannot act on requests.
Right, yeah, we understand that.
But I think we can ask.
Yeah, let me just jump here. If it's a council wants to direct staff to look into this matter and to come with, come to you with some sort of provision of how to create a mechanism for people to do this, you as a body can direct me to do that at this time.
So the timeframe would be, if let's say if we were to do that tonight, we wouldn't be able to talk about this for another two or three weeks, I guess?
Yes, but also we would have to prepare sort of a staff report, so it would probably take longer because we're talking about an ordinance change. And so we obviously can't draft an ordinance in two weeks, so.
Would it have to be an ordinance change?
I'm not sure, but we would want to investigate how it's possible and it would might be a little bit, but it's certainly something you can ask me to look into.
Everyone would just like to know, but at the same time, and I'll be honest with you, we also have some folks in town who are perpetually building and I'm concerned that if what we allow for one, we have to do for all, but we have to definitely look at it.
And that's what we.
Right, there would be, I would expect certain stipulations.
So again, that would be what I would want in a staff report.
So maybe it would be just a preliminary report, just showing you, these are the different options? And then further direct us to act on those potential options.
Well, the other, the other point I would want to make is how long do you suppose your whole project would take?
Well, right now it's in the planning stage. We're wanting to try and get it permitted to, before John retires. Nat Calacot's actually our contractor, so we're using a local contractor and everything like that. So it would be something that, I mean, our timeframe's probably within a year.
Okay, so you are talking about enough time that the delay of several weeks until you got a word from us would be meaningful?
Yeah, it wouldn't, yeah, this proposal wouldn't probably affect us at this point in time, but it might affect somebody down the road and something like that. So, yeah, without getting permission right now, it would definitely, I mean, but who knows with the building process and everything, it could take six months.
How long that takes?
So it would probably to actually do something, take a substantial amount of time, just to be honest with you, but it might help the next person down the road.
Yeah, okay.
So if you wanted, but it's certainly something that I could come back and tell you what the options are.
Okay.
If you do, I would appreciate that. And I think if you have a couple of options that you think are potentially workable, that we would have the option to enact some exemption for a limited time.
I probably, you probably would, well, we can save, but I probably would not be something that would come soon. It would, because you can't just sort of exempt somebody in a way.
No, yeah, but I meant.
You would have to probably exact, because there is an ordinance, so it would be somewhat of a process to deal with that.
And we're not asking for an exemption, just like a permissible basis with your building permit.
But we could tell you what, what the landscape looks like?
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
So we are directing staff to come back with us with a little.
Just some options and then go from there.
Some options, yes.
Appreciate it. Thank you, we appreciate it.
Just keep getting it right now.
Okay, any other comments?
My name is Erlene Gleisner. I've been in Willett's now about five years and I live downtown, so I do walk the streets. I have a concern because I was walking with friends of mine who are unfamiliar with the way the sidewalks are now. And I believe that we are creating, or what Caltrans is creating, a wheelchair-friendly town. But I'm concerned that it's not a pedestrian-friendly town sidewalk. Because there are areas where I see that they are blocking off what had been crosswalk across Main Street by building a step up so that there's a curb. And it funnels the sidewalk to a wheelchair access, but there, some of the corners just have this funnel place where there's steps on either side, there are curbs on either side. And so only one person can really walk there. And my friend, who was walking with me, tripped twice on these little abutments. And so I have a concern that I would like you to walk all the corners, please, and see if I'm, you know, crazy, but I think we're going to have a little bit of a problem. You could be a liability with those curbs or they're just how they are because they're trippable.
So I can have staff to come and get her information so that she can talk to some of that.
Larry?
She's very right. She's not the first person that has come and talked to me about this. And it just, it makes it for the wheelchair, but if you're walking by the wheelchair with somebody that's elderly, there's not room for two of you.
And Erlene wasn't finished.
There's a second thing is if you stand across from the post office, all across the Main Street, and you stand where the sidewalk is or the crosswalk is, and you look as to where that goes, it does not match up with the wheelchair access there on the corner. And the wheelchair will have to come down on that west side, go across, and then make a curve in the street to go back up to get onto the sidewalk. So I have a real concern about those things and I thought I'd lay it on your table.
Thank you. Thank you.
Dusty, could somebody get her address?
Yeah, and I've been looking at pictures of the exact things that we already noticed and we're in discussions with engineering and Caltrans to understand if they're going to be improved or even meeting requirements.
Okay, thanks. Yes, please.
Hi, my name's Patricia Richardson. I was here last month. I didn't realize you meant every two weeks, so I'll be here every two weeks then. I live on Willow Lane, Cross Street, Bechtel, at Adams', if anybody's aware of where Adams Tire is on Bechtel Road. And at that curve in the road, at that intersection, since the opening of the hospital, we have lost two cars, a tree, a fence, a gang of mailboxes, and a dog. Due to high rate of speed, people are late for work, they gotta do 70 down Bechtel. Well, this is my concern because we have the charter school, we have the senior center, and those are walkers. Old people are good and fast runners and the students in and out. So we're asking that you check out Bechtel Road. Possibly an officer that has, wants to have lunch, go sit at the next to Adams on Shell Lane and just watch. It's downright scary, folks. And somebody's going to get hurt. And being that I have brought this up twice and I'll bring it up 17 more times, being it's public record now and somebody does get hurt, there's a chance of a lawsuit because you know about it. And you're not doing anything about it, so people that don't like to work and like to sue, hello Willett's. So please see what you can do to assist us. I'd also like to introduce my friend Tammy and she's going to speak to you on her vision.
Hi, my name is Tammy. I also live on Bechtel Road. I live at the Redwood Meadows Senior Complex. My husband drives a motorized wheelchair and he goes up and down Bechtel Road to his doc's appointments, to the store. And he has also been almost hit coming around that corner there and I'm just scared for him. And I would like to say, please help, thank you.
Thank you. We have a, you're going to be referring that to our traffic committee? Can you be rude? Do you have a comment, please, say yes.
Yeah, since her, she was here last time, myself and the officers on our day shift, when we can, we go out there and we have been working. We also, and we've cited a few people. We also, I have a traffic safety committee meeting coming up and I'm going to talk to, with the traffic safety committee, it's not scheduled yet, but it's supposed to happen soon. We're going to talk about if there's anything that we can do to the actual road or signage or something to help improve that wrong.
Would you like me to come to that traffic safety meeting?
No, but I just want to talk to you before I have the meeting, so I'll get your information.
Okay, thank you. Okay, was there any other public comment? If not, we're going to move on to the next item, which is a discussion and possible action regarding Paint the Town project in the downtown area. And I think city manager wants to say something and then.
Yes, we have a staff report. The City of Willett's recently received a request from a local artist, Brian Weller, who had the idea to, and actually approached the mayor and thought it was, it would be an interesting idea to paint the trash and recycling bins in the downtown area. And we thought that, gosh, that sounds like an interesting idea. And then our city clerk was like, you know, let's, let's do one first and see how that comes out before we do all of them. And I thought that was a great idea. And so low and behold, last week, we were, we were treated to a brand-new painted recycling bin on Commercial Avenue right across the Noyo Theater. And immediately when it went out, there were lots, there was a little bit of a buzz going around there. And I thought to myself, wow, I'm really glad Kathy said that because this is a huge difference and I think I better ask council whether they like it first before I go ahead and paint all the trash cans. And so I had a very nice conversation with the artist, Mr. Weller, and he talked about his vision for these recycling bins. And he said, he gave me, he told me the, well, I'm going to let him speak on it, but we had a very nice conversation about his sort of vision for these recycling bins. I went and looked at it and found that the craftsmanship was, was very well done. I did think that it was something that should come to you with some parameters around it if you decide to go forward and let this project go forward. For example, some of the things that came to staff's minds, for the nitty-gritty, are we would want to make sure that we sort of saw the designs first and staff could sort of preview them before they get painted. The quality materials would be used and that there was a commitment by the artist to repair or touch up the receptacles for a period of time so that it doesn't become a public works issue. Because I don't think that our public works crew quite has the talent or wherewithal, I mean, they're wonderful talented people, but to really do justice to these painted trash receptacles. He also gave us, in the staff report, you'll see some ideas for some future receptacles and so I included those. And I, and I would like to invite him to come and speak to us about his project. And he has not asked for any contribution. This has been a donation, he's been taking donations from, from business owners and I appreciate that. And I'd like to invite Mr. Weller to come to the podium and talk about this project of painting the town.
And then we will have a public comment after Brian speaks, so if there's of you wish to speak to us, you'll be invited up.
Well, thank you. What would you like to know?
Well, I think maybe, city manager gave us a little bit of history, but I'm thinking back to when I first met you and it was at the Well meeting and we were, Madge had facilitated and we were all having discussion about how we wanted to improve our community. And then when I saw you over there painting and I heard about painting the Paint the Town and thinking back to how these were just ideas back then and now seeing it happening, I'm very excited that Well is working on it and that you're giving your time and talents and I think it looks lovely. I'm excited.
Yeah, we have photographs of everything, the before and after of the one that you did. And as much as I love the original, this is beautiful. I mean, I just love it. I mean, I'm not, I'm not a big fan of modernist art, you know, so if this trash can was hanging on a wall, I probably wouldn't really pay much attention to it, but I think it's, I think it's great. And I've always felt that we should have some kind of, of a project around town, you know, I'm sure you're aware, there's a lot of towns that have, you know, pigs and other animals and Snoopy's and things like that that are placed around town. And they're actually bid on by people who decorate them. And then, have you heard about this one?
Not especially.
So what happens, so people, individuals who want to decorate an object will, will bid on it. And I don't know if they pay for it or if they just make a proposal or whatever it is. And then very often, after the thing is done, it sits there on the, on the sidewalk as yard art, as, as street art. And sometimes they even sell it to raise money, you know, for whatever, you know. And I've seen, I've seen those things in other cities around the country and all different kinds of animals. But I think this is great, I like the idea. You know, the only thing I would caution about, obviously, is cliche time, art is in the eye of the beholder. And as I look through some of the samples that were presented, you know, personally, I preferred some more than others. But I think that would probably be the trick to vet all these things and get probably as much public support for a particular design as possible. But we're never going to please everybody, but good on you, Brian. Thank you.
Other questions or comments before we open?
Yes, is this open to other artists in our community to do trash bin or is it just exclusively for him?
The answer is yes, absolutely.
Okay, so anybody could do one that wanted to do one. Would they have to come and talk? Would they have to come and talk to you about it?
Not at all. No, no. I'm not part of a committee on this, so. But maybe I could frame it, the question or answer it this way. Since we met, sometime back, was it a few months ago? The real purpose of the Paint the Town initiative is really to attract more businesses and businesses to the town. And really uplift the, you know, the creative spirit, if you want, of the town. And really get the community involved in, in really uplifting, look and feel of the place, really. You know, particularly, I suppose, in light of the fact that many businesses have gone and so on. And so, one of the things I've done, next to the trash receptacle, which I'm calling Downtown Boogie. Boogie Woogie was one of the most famous Mondrian paintings of all time. But anyway, next to it, I have a big board with some feedback forms. And I've, in fact, got some copies here if you'd like them. And I think today, we've got about thirteen or fourteen feedbacks. And basically, you've got your name, and then whether you're a visitor or a business owner or a resident, could be more than one. And then your first impressions of this particular piece of art, and then other suggestions for other work. So, the idea we have was really to, just to get the, get this conversation going. So, I don't have any exclusivity over the pieces. I just thought, let's get started. And the Noyo, which I'm, have you all seen the Noyo now?
I haven't seen it yet. The traffic is too bad. I haven't gotten down to it yet. Oh, you're talking about the theater itself?
Yes.
Oh, that's neat.
It's literally just been finished.
Wow.
Yeah, do you wanna see that? You've probably seen it, yes. So, what's interesting is that, as I was painting this, Louis and Jeff Hoover, the owners of the Noyo, they came to one of our recent meetings and showed us this piece and said, we're gonna be painting, repainting the Noyo. And the interesting thing about the Noyo is that it's sort of, it was opened in 1940 and was part of this Art Deco movement of not just theaters, but buildings and designs and art and products and so on. It really swept the country. And not just the US, but Europe. What's fascinating is that just before the First World War, when Art Deco really took off, was about the same time as what became known as the Modernist Movement with de Stijl, which was a Dutch word for meaning style. And Mondrian, Mondrian, the artist I, my version of Mondrian, was one of the, one of the real movers and shakers in this, along with Theo Drosberg, one of the real movers and shakers. But they influenced fashion and design and buildings and so on. So, my thought was, well, how wonderful, we have this great Art Deco landmark in our city. And to have opposite that, this small Mondrian, in essence, which is an echo of history, at the same time, maybe will become a public talking point, if you will. And so, Bob Doherty, an energy mentor mill, was very, very generous and kind, and gave a very generous donation of the paint, some brushes and some masking tape in a tray. So, we now have some paints. And also, I went to see Jerry Ward, who's the owner of Solid Waste. And he said, this is a great idea. Go for it. Just go for it. Let's have a look. I'd love to see this. So, subsequently, I left a note for Jerry to say, I'm particularly interested in painting the dumpsters, which are down the side of the Noyo Theater. I don't know if you've seen the dumpsters down there. They are disgraceful. That's an English term, void of blackdom. And I think how wonderful that we could turn something as lowly as a trash receptacle and a dumpster into an artwork. You know, if we can do it at that level. So, anyway, Jeff and those are very happy with the idea. So, we're gonna get, we're gonna get some paints on the dumpsters. That's if, you know, Jerry's okay with that. And I might do some motifs. But other than that, just to answer your question, we want to encourage as many artists in our community as possible to get involved. And we have many other projects, by the way, including painting fire hydrants. And we've got the okay from the fire chief. And of interest about the fire hydrants, of which there are quite a few, I think.
Over three hundred.
Over three hundred in the community. What's interesting is they've never been, they've never been in code. Now, there are color codes, it turns out, for water hydrants. Whether you have, you know.
Water pressure.
In terms of flow, water flow. So, you know, it's mild to moderate to high. And there's a color code for each. So, one of the ideas we're having is to look at these fire hydrants, decorate them, and then use the particular color for that coating. And so, anyway, that's another project we're talking about to do. And I think Madge has got some thoughts.
I just, I'm mindful of, we have a very long agenda.
Yes, of course.
Everybody who's gonna speak, try to be brief. Larry, and I think also Jerry had some comment.
I just, number eleven, the dancing, if you can kinda slow that up a little bit, it'd be good for me. Thank you.
Say that again?
Number eleven, the nude.
Oh, that one, that's the Matisse. Do you like that one particularly?
I'm not fond of that one. I always put that one.
Oh, you're not fond of that one? I could, we could, we could put some clothes on, if you may.
Anyhow, I like, I like the rest of them.
Yeah, yeah, we're not, I mean, I got particularly worried. These are just ideas, and so, let's open it up.
First of all, I love it. Like Larry, I think we definitely need to look at the subject matter just so that we don't offend somebody. All of you got a CD that, when I went to the league meeting on Friday, they provided me a flash drive. City Eureka has done, kinda like, I'm gonna call it an art district, but the information is there. They, rather than reinvent the wheel, they've given us everything there. The city has a program up there. They started up, instead of painting dumpsters, their issue was an alley. And they started painting those giant electric utility boxes in places where they're doing. And so, they've got a whole program they've developed. And that was what's on the CD. There's a couple PowerPoint's. There's one document I couldn't open up, but everything else. So, I thought I provided the city manager, I gave one for Kathy and Dusty. You have that, and plus, I gave you my binder of the program. And they talk about how they compensate artists, have a program for making sure that the artist kept up. And actually, it was kinda apropos that you're proposing this, and I'm sitting there on Friday looking at what they're doing up there.
Interesting.
So, I would be for something like that. But at the same time, they developed a way to do it. And it's part of economic development for the arts.
That sounds wonderful. And just lastly, if I might say, I've done some research. And as far as I know, this particular Mondrian trash receptacle is the world's first. There isn't one anywhere else in the world. So, Willetts does have a world first. Just thought I'd mention.
Now, if you did a bus and put a couple of kids and a mom in there.
If you're okay with heights, maybe you might wanna take on the building on the corner.
I would like to open this up to some other public comment on this item, please.
Hi, I'm Paul Jacobson. And I've been coordinating the Painting the Town project for, through Well. Brian is the first one to actually materialize a painting. But we have a lot of plans to paint Willets. The whole project started from the meeting that Suprema was talking about, in which lots of people gave ideas of how we could improve the community. Driving here today, I counted how many businesses were closed. Just in a drive-by, there's over twenty that are empty. So, with that as the backdrop, we started thinking of cheap, easy ideas that we could improve the place, bring up the spirit, and, you know, make it more inviting. Because at the moment, I don't think very many people wanna get off the bypass and visit Willets. So, Painting the Town was a culmination of many ideas by a lot of different people. Brian followed through beautifully. We have, I've talked to teachers at the community, the charter schools. They will be participating in helping paint fire hydrants. And as Brian said, we have permission from the fire department. And I've talked to the fire chief a number of times. We're looking at the corner of Commercial and Main Street to do the cement barricades. We're getting help to clean them. We're getting the process going for liability protection. And we're, and the process going for design submissions, that we can actually look that central, make that central corner look a little bit more inviting, instead of what it's looked like for the last, at least, ten years that I've been here. There are a lot of ideas. I just became aware of the Eureka project, so I'd be really interested in seeing that. We have murals that are, have been suggested, sculptures, public art of all kinds. The little designs that people can do on the meters are also cheap and easy. We just, I just got permission and approval that we could paint the gas and electric meters through PG&E. They allow that, as long as you don't cover the, you know, what they actually have to read and the codes that are tagged there. It's fine to do that. And so, we will proceed with that and develop a procedure to do that by, you know, contacting the business owners and so forth. So, that's the tip of the iceberg of what we're, what we've got planned and have already started to implement with Brian's piece.
Three minutes is up. Let's have some questions.
No, just a comment. Thank you.
And I wanna thank you also. All right, some other folks wanting to address the city council on Painting the Town and this particular part of it, which is the trash bins. Painting those, anybody else? And I did read the comments that were over there, just today, I think it was. And they were all favorable and effusive and go to it and get the rest of them done. So, the one thing I think we might, if there aren't any other comments, that we might need to just decide, are there, do we want Brian and Paul to kind of be in charge of the volunteer effort? And do we need to have the city staff person look at things, or what?
I would, in fact, I think I would rather you guys, my opinion is, look at what Eureka did, and then I would look towards our city manager to maybe come back and, I don't know, if you've totally had a chance to digest what I gave you.
I haven't had a chance to even look at it today, 'cause it's been crazy today. But let me just tell you, I'm sort of the rule person. I gotta make rules because this is city property and we have to do everything right. That's why we wanted to see one done first. And I was so impressed with the craftsmanship and the ideas and the thought behind doing a Mondrian right next to, across from Noyo. I was, I was just really thrilled by that. But the things that sprung to mind is, I, it is city property and we don't, we can't just sort of let people paint everything that are city property. We have to have some parameters. And those parameters need to be, you know, the materials need to be of a good quality. We need a commitment that it be kept up. I think there needs to be some city staff to look at, make sure that whatever design is proposed, that it is appropriate. And, you know, nothing controversial, or, you know, we have certain rules about city property that we have to follow. Also, this particular artist is excellent. I mean, his craftsmanship is just amazing. And so, I'm hesitant to say any artist could do anything unless there's some sort of a vetting process about the actual artist. You know, if Brian Weller is to, wants, is, would paint all of them, I would be so happy. But, no, I was really thrilled with your work. So, that there are certain parameters that you sort of just have to follow for city property. And so, I would ask that staff sort of shepherd this process as to city property, as to private properties. They can certainly get permission from property owners to do that sort of thing, or from PG&E. But I do wanna sort of keep an eye on it, just to make sure that it's within our, 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 that everything fits in, the quality is good, the materials are good, and that it's kept up for a reasonable amount of time.
Yeah, I agree. I think, though, that, you know, that's the mechanical, technical aspects of it. You know, the quality and things like that. But I think the real issue is going to be the subject matter. And that's gonna be sticky. And, you know, art is very subjective. We are blessed with an art commission that, and I mean, this whole area is just crawling with artists. And I think it would be worth our time to tap into that community and let them help us make these selections. I think the city needs to make certain broad parameters. You know, subjects that, you know, I think you alluded to that, that shouldn't be. My personal opinion would be that something like the Mondrian, even though I'm not a big fan of modern art, that would probably be the sort of thing, not Mondrian necessarily, but that would sort of be the sort of thing that would be most appropriate. Because it's kind of neutral, it's colorful, it's joyous to look at. And, you know, you don't have naked people or, you know, anything else that could offend somebody. And Lord knows, we don't wanna offend anybody.
I always say, tell people when they ask me to do things like that, I have basic, my basic rules are nothing controversial, nothing religious, nothing naked. Those are my basic parameters, and it's just basic. And as long as that's sort of covered, I'm good.
I don't wanna kill the momentum of this project. Often, there's an inspiration, and then bureaucracy gets in there and the project dies. And I don't wanna see that happen. But I do believe that we need some parameters. So, I'd like to propose that council allow, we've seen one, and allow for a limited number. For example, we allow for six more waste receptacles to be painted. And that those six are approved by city manager. And at the same time, we develop a plan or a program that can come back before the council. But let's not squash it while we wait for.
Yes.
For the bureaucracy to catch up. Sounds good.
Is that a motion?
Yes.
Do you want a second?
Well, I'm not sure what the wording was, but basically, we're saying, let's support this project under.
Approval of six.
Well, I mean, I'm not sure I would even limit it to six. I would just say, let's approve the project and let staff monitor the thing.
But the project, it needs some kind of a quantification for the short term. Because anybody could come and start painting them.
No, that would be part of the rules set up by the city.
But we haven't set the rules yet.
But if you give me discretion to do that, then I could just do that.
Hearing from Ron is not necessarily a set of written rules, but that if we have, you've already expressed some guidelines. And if a approval of what the proposed design comes to you and you say, it makes my guidelines go, and including the quality of the work that's gonna be expected, that we don't need to set, have it come back here for a set of rules.
Yeah, no, I have a good idea.
Agree with not squashing the energy here. And I think we don't need a whole new set of rules. We just need very minimal.
All I would ask for is just a resolution, sort of approving the project in general and giving the city manager the discretion to allow these projects to be formed.
I would, yeah, I would support that.
I would support that.
Yeah, I guess, yeah, I guess that was first, and a second, or whatever.
Okay, any other discussion before we?
And again, as you look at the material there, I also export it as the, they're looking for kind of a North Coast kind of art initiative there. So, as you look at that, I think if this goes right in line with this, so, again, I'm for it.
Great, okay, so, can we just have a voice vote?
Yep.
All right, all those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you very much, and thank you, Brian and Paul and everybody else.
Thank you.
Thanks really go to the team as a whole, so, on their behalf, thank you.
Go team.
Go team, right. Yeah, it's wonderful that we have volunteer energy to be part of rejuvenating our town and beautifying it and making it more colorful. It's what we need right now, and we've got it. We've got citizens who are willing to step forward. It's just amazing. So, we can keep moving. We have a long agenda. The next item is adoption, this is a big one. The housing, the general plan housing permit. And do you wanna just go directly to Dusty on this?
I'm gonna just go right to you. And here we have our committee and development director, Dusty Dooley.
Dusty Dooley, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Strong, council members, Dusty Dooley, city planner. So, I guess I should start by apologizing. There's absolutely no singing, dancing, or crying to my presentation.
No apology necessary. No apology necessary.
Okay.
Just our thanks.
All right, okay, you're good. It's disappointing. So, the, the matter be, for you for consideration is the adoption of the 2019 housing element update. Again, this is an element of the general plan that, that each jurisdiction is required to update every five years. The, the purpose of the housing element is to ensure that local governments, the city of Willets adequately plan to meet the housing needs of all people within the community, regardless of their income. The underlying premise of the housing element law is that, for the, for the private market, to adequately address housing needs and demand, local governments, again, the city, we must adopt land use plans and regulatory system which provide opportunities for, and do not unduly constrain housing opportunities. So, again, why, why I emphasize private market is, the housing element, we need to make sure that there's adequate opportunities to provide housing for all income groups, we are not required to build that. Okay. This, just a, just a couple, kind of, what I thought were interesting facts that, that came to light with the housing element update, we have a very old housing stock, the majority of our housing was built in the late 60s, early 70s, and so, we can expect that a, a lot of folks could probably use some, some, some funds to rehab some of the older structures. One of the wonderful things about getting this housing updated is that we can become eligible for a lot of state funds that do address opportunities to, to get a, get at a, a pretty good chunk of change that we could then loan out to, to folks to rehab their structures. This is a program that the city previously had under, I think, either redevelopment funds and/or CDVG redevelopment block grant funds. We also have a higher percentage of low-income housing than, than most areas in the state, and we do have adequate developed land to support anticipated housing needs for all income groups, where a lot of jurisdictions are having to go through the city and look to rezone land to high density residential, we're not in that situation, and I'm very glad to report that. Just go over the, the agenda packet, you have a lot of information in front of you, you have the agenda summary and staff report, you have attachment A, which is, I'm calling the clean version of the, of the housing element update, attachment B, which shows some, some edits to the housing element that occurred since the, the previous time that this was before you. You have the city resolution, should you choose to adopt it tonight, and then you have the initial study negative declaration that was prepared per SEQA to support the adoption of the housing element. This, again, this matter was previously before the city council on April 26th, November 17, and was approved to submit to the California Department of Housing and Community Development. HCD reviewed the draft housing element and directed us to complete some, some relatively minor changes. Again, those are shown in, in attachment B in the edited version, and we did receive an initial compliance letter from HCD stating or acknowledging that, that the housing element in its current written form does meet state requirements and will be certified by HCD once we adopt it. And I should mention that it's not only the adoption of the housing element, but a number of the associated revisions to the zoning code, which are the, the next item on tonight's agenda. So, and I should also mention, I think there are some folks here that may be interested in, in talking about some of the proposed changes to second unit law regulations, that's the next agenda item, this is the housing element, which is very much related and directs us to make those changes, but.
Does, if, if there are objections to certain recommendations in the housing element that then reflect, and then the second item, the next item afterwards, they should adjust both at times?
I mean, I, I'll, I'll use the mirror, let you handle it, but just wanting to showcase that there's a couple different items that are related and
Well, I guess my question is, if we adopt the housing element as it is before us, and then we get to the next item and decide not to implement something that's in it, would that be a problem?
It, it depends on which one we're talking about, some of them are required by, by state law and would, would prevent the housing element from being certified by HCD. But all, all the zoning code revisions that are being proposed tonight, this is the next agenda item, either are directed from the housing element and/or updates to state housing law.
Is that the
That's, that's my brief presentation, yes.
Presentation, any questions for, yes?
Yeah, I, I just happened to, to come to this one table, which is table one, future housing needs 2014 to 19.
You have a
From the regional housing needs allocation.
Page D.
This is page
We're off of the
Five, it's 29 to 480, at your bottom numbers.
Or five in the actual document?
Yeah, right. Anyway, I was kind of fascinated with the breakdowns of the, the types of housing needed. By the way, what does one, two, 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 and six mean in, in that column?
Those are the, so that's the, RENA is the regional housing needs allocation.
Right.
And that's the state telling us how many new housing units we have to provide for each of those income groups.
Oh, I'm, okay, and, and the percentage, is a percentage of the total housing that those numbers represent?
Yeah.
Correct? Now, is there, are, they're only saying that we need 13 new housing units?
That's correct, because at the, at the snapshot when this was done, we had a declining population. We've actually gotten new RENA numbers that are significantly higher than these, that'll be addressed in the, the next housing element, but taking a look at this land use inventory, which hasn't changed dramatically since it was completed, we're, we're still okay with the new RENA numbers.
So
But, but the state's anticipating quite a significant amount of new housing units to accommodate for
So, a significant amount, but would the percentages change?
I, I don't have it memorized, I'd have to take a look at that, I can send that to you, though.
Well, the thing is, I'm kind of fascinated by this, because I know for many, many, many years, everybody, the, the big push has been for low-cost housing in this town, that, that was the big need. This is telling me that what we really need is moderate and above moderate housing.
And I do recall that that continues to be the case with the new RENA numbers.
Yeah, and, and I think that's, you know, it's encouraging, I mean, it's a dichotomy going on here, obviously, you need to have housing for, for low-income people, but too often, I think we overlook the fact that we need housing for high-income people or moderate income, because that's what makes a city grow and prosper. And if you don't have housing for these types of people, the city doesn't grow. So, I was happy to see these numbers like this.
Any other comments or questions for Dusty? And then we'll open up the public hearing, so if any would like to comment on any aspect of the, of the housing element, this is your opportunity to do that. Anybody? If not
My question came back.
Hi.
A woman. Hi, Dusty, we just heard a comment during the public communication about a housing concern. So, I, when I looked through there, I didn't see anything that was addressed, I was just flipping through again. Is there anything in there that addresses, and, that addresses that issue?
If I recall correctly, the issue was the allowance of a temporary living situation while someone constructs a, a permanent house?
Yeah.
No, there's no direction provided in the housing element, temporary housing doesn't, doesn't come into play in the, in the housing element, not that it could, but it's just not required. So, so the, the answer is no. I kind of want to go on and kind of share some ideas on that.
Okay, I was just thinking back
I'll work with Stephanie to get a report back to you.
Okay, I was just thinking back to like last year, when we were talking about this particular, the housing element, and we were talking about what the issue was at that time, and we were talking about granny units and those sorts of things.
Yeah, so granny units, which are now defined as accessory dwelling units,
Yeah.
Are addressed in here and will be a big part of the next discussion.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions, comments? And I, okay, please come back. You have three minutes.
So, um
And please state your name.
Jamie Bootleair. When you, is, does the state want you guys to have more housing, is that what it comes down to for the town?
Under the current assessment of our housing needs, we have very few sort of mandated additional units, or that we're supposed to try to provide for up to 13 more units. That's a moving target, and that's only the lower, you know, we, we obviously can have more than that if we wish.
So, is there any kind of programs with the city, working with people who are trying to develop, where, you know, let's say you're bringing some nice, you know, apartments and stuff, and you're gonna have to pay $50,000 for sewer hookups, or you're gonna have to, you know, fix the sidewalks on both sides of the road and pave the road in order to, you know, there's so much that goes along with developing something, it's a lot of money for someone to throw out, you know, $500,000 or $800,000. So, is there any kind of programs that are like, hey, these people are trying to come in and do this, so maybe we can, like, if they're putting in 10 units that are trying to bring in, you know, an upper-class person, you know, area, that you work with them a little bit and maybe not charging so much for every single sewer hookup, or, or putting so much on that developer that it, it kind of makes them go, forget it, you know?
Yeah, my comment would be that we, we do, we have those kinds of ordinances and those kinds of fee structures, and we do apply them very equitably across the board, but we try to really look at them to make them, you know, attractive for new development. We, we are trying to be friendly, a development-friendly city, but we can't just make, you know, individual exceptions. So, I see Jerry and then Ron.
Jamie, what happened in the past, I think what you're talking about is what we had under redevelopment, where we had money we could throw at those things, and that's what used to happen in the area your parents grew up in where redevelopment existed. The governor came in and cut that program out.
Mm-hmm.
And so, absent a pot of money to be able to do that, we're basically covering costs, and I'd defer to Stephanie if you've got some other answer, but I think
Oh, that's it, we don't actually cover our costs, and we do not, and we don't subsidize housing, we don't have the funds to do that.
And this tells us we are not under the gun like some places are because
And those particular things like fees for sewer hookups and all that is not in the housing element, and it's our ongoing, things that we, that we adopted at city council.
No, I was just, my, I was curious, if someone's coming in and saying, hey, I want to develop this, and I can do, I'll put in all this and put this time and effort into it, and put my money on the line, and then there's so much that comes along with developing in the city, and, you know, expectations that maybe if it's something that you guys are needing and they're willing to do, that maybe you come together and there's some kind of thing adopted where, you know what, okay, you're putting in this many, you're doing 12 places, maybe we can do, you're, charge you for 10 hookups instead of 12, or there's some kind of a thing that, you know what I mean, makes it attractive for multiple people.
Ron, and then Supreme.
You know, that's, that's an interesting perspective, and, 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 you know, sitting up here and also sitting out there in, in the world, it's not that cut and dry. I mean, I, I can, I could support your position, what you're talking about. Here's a reality here, the, the city, we, we sit here with whatever resources we have, and unfortunately, they're limited, you know, we don't, we can't do everything. We would love to see things happen in the city. Very often, in order to make things happen, the growth in the buildings and the housing and all this other stuff, depends on people like you and your husband. You know, to build these things, to put your money on the line to build these apartments, the stores, the fact, whatever, whatever it's going to be, the city does not do that, cities do not do that, governments don't do that. All we can do is to create a, an environment that would enable you to do it. But having said that, the fact that private developers are willing and able to put their money on the line and to, to do these things, it seems to me that the city should be able to partner up in some way, and that would depend, obviously, on the financial situation of the city. I mean, in some places, if we have a really big pool of money for development, like Jerry referred to, we used to have that, the redevelopment money that was there, I mean, we had a lot of money that we could actually give out as grants or low-cost loans, we don't have that anymore, but I'm wondering if maybe we can use some imagination and come up with some kind of a plan where there could be some sort of a sharing.
A partnering.
Yeah, because the bottom line is, if you put up millions of dollars to create the housing development, for example, that's going to bring money into the city ultimately, in, in real estate taxes, in new people that are gonna buy, you know, spend sales tax money into town and support the business, so it's, so it's, so it's really a partnership. I mean, I think, and this is gonna be a real tough one, because it's, it's hard to figure out, but I'm, I'm thinking it'd be well worth the effort to just to see how some sort of a public-private partnership could be developed with developers and the city to, to make some of these things happen. And I don't know what that would look like, but
Yeah. I want to just comment that this is not stuff that's in the housing element, so we're
We're way off the
Way off the subject, but it's on
Yeah.
And I'm just gonna add really quickly that anytime a city subsidizes private development, it's taxpayers subsidizing
Yeah, well, that's true.
People, and, and that is often, as, there are prohibitions against that, and, and we do need to cover our costs, and we're, we'll have more conversations about that, because right now, our current fees do not cover our costs. And so, currently, I would say that our taxpayers are funding private development, and that is a problem, and which is why we are, I'm gonna be asking you to do some, take a, a good look at our fee structure, because private development should not be subsidized by other taxpayers, so, anyway.
Supreme, any questions or comments?
Stephanie, pretty much, I was going to say, and I wanted to say to Jamie, that I started out with your perspective, and then in doing some research and talking to Fort Bragg about what they're charging, what the county's charging, I discovered that Willetts' fees are incredibly low, and in a way, we're already giving a break in terms of new construction, and we're not even meeting our costs, and therefore, our local taxpayers are picking up part of the tab. And as a business owner, I don't want people to, I'm not asking for somebody to subsidize me, and when I do remodel or work at my business, and when somebody builds something and then they turn around and sell it for a profit, that is essentially a business, and so, we would be asking taxpayers to pick up part of the bill. All we do want, new housing.
Okay, I, I think we are way off the, the subject at hand, but I think it's, it's useful to, you know, to listen to those kind of comments and see where we stand and be as, as development-friendly as we can be, but make sure we're covering our costs. All right, so were there any other comments about the housing element? Remember, if not, I think we do need
Oh.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, Joe.
I just, my name's Joe, I'd just like to make a brief comment. If one goes around the downtown Willets and locks up a number of empty buildings and apartments, like the Van Hotel, for example, I wouldn't say that Willetts have been going out of its way to subsidize development. During the first few years of the 2000s, Willetts abated approximately 250 low-cost housing units. One of them is sitting right there behind the Village Market, and that was 14 of low-cost apartments that, to my knowledge, they've never received any encouragement of public financing. And you hear UKIA talking about reconstituting the Palace Hotel. I've never heard of anything like that, and Willetts is highly noticeable for the number of, of both industrial and housing properties that are shamefully unused. So, that's my comment, thank you.
If there's no other comments, and we've already actually heard from council members, unless there's anything else, then I would like to have a roll call vote on
We're about made a motion. I'll make a motion to approve the housing element.
It's also, the staff recommendation also includes the weighting of the, what is it, regarding the environment, the next statement?
You have recommended action in the agenda summary?
Yeah, that's, that's what you're moving.
Okay, I'm sliding back to it right now.
I'm trying to find it in all of these pages. So, the recommended action is being moved, any second?
Awesome.
Jerry, Jerry seconded, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Gonzalez.
Yes.
Stransky.
Yes.
Hornstein.
Yes.
Higridis.
Yes.
Okay, and tell me what page we're going to.
398.
For the next item? For the next item? Okay, thank you very much, Dusty, and it looks like you're up again. The next item is discussion possible introduction of a proposed ordinance amending the Willett zoning ordinance, and we'll have Dusty explain that to us.
Yes, thank you. And this does include provisions for reducing fees for water and sewer connections for low-income housing. Part of that last conversation is relevant to some of the changes being proposed today. So this is ordinance amendment number OA two thousand eighteen dash oh three. This is a city-sponsored request to amend the Willett zoning code as directed by now the previous housing element, as well as updates to state housing law. So again, in your agenda packet, you have a ton of paper. You have the agenda summary, staff report, again, attachment A is the zoning code amendments with the clean version, and then the zoning, attachment B is the edited version of the zoning code amendments, so that you can see the changes that are occurring to existing code that are being proposed. And then attachment C is, is housing element programs related to the zoning code amendments that are before you tonight. So again, staff is following up on the direction provided in the previous housing element as well as state law. I wanna spend some time going over the staff report, which provides a summary of the proposed revisions, and it also notes the housing element program and/or state law that directed the proposed revisions. Then after that, I wanna just go over some of the key provisions that are in the accessory dwelling regulations. So if you don't mind finding the staff report.
We have to do this, it's three hundred pages.
Right, yeah.
If we could, if we could request, if we have a big document like that, will you give it to us separate? Is that all right?
This is item three D.
We've got four hundred and eighty pages, it's hard to scroll.
D isn't dogged?
Yeah, that's what I was saying, if somebody knows what page in every-
Two ninety-six.
Okay, so-
On the bottom.
Two hundred, yeah, so if you just-
Two ninety-six of four eighty.
Either that or Dusty's not allowed to write so much.
I'm almost there. Okay.
Taking that seriously.
I think everybody is ready to proceed.
Staff report of ordinance amendment August twenty-second, all right. And so then, if you, if you wanna just start with the, go over the summary of the ordinance provisions here, the first one, multi-family site preservations. So we have a limited amount of land within the city that's some R-three, that's land that's really reserved for multifamily housing, which typically you gotta get to a higher density to meet housing for low-income numbers. And, you know, currently, we allow for a single-family home to be built on it, and a lot of times, you might have a half-acre lot that could support, you know, fifteen units, but if you go and drop a single-family home on there, now you've lost potentially all of that, all that potential growth there. And what can end up happening is, you're now left in a situation where you've gotta go throughout the city and find additional vacant or unutilized land and zone it for multifamily residential, and that can be a difficult exercise, 'cause a lot of times, owners aren't looking for that zoning, and then we end up in a situation where we have to, we have to force somebody to rezon their land. And luckily, we're not talking about having to do that, we're looking good, but that's why you had direction in previous housing element to reserve your R-three land for multifamily residential. And so what that means now is, the other housing types, the duplexes, the single-family residential, they go to discretionary uses, so you can still potentially do it, but you gotta get discretionary use permit approved by the council. Multifamily residential, meaning more than three units, is still permitted by right. Okay? What that might mean is if someone wants to build a single-family home, it might be such a small lot that it's just, that's really what it's appropriate for. It might be that we allow them to do that, but we, we have them located in such a fashion that it doesn't preclude future development of the property for multifamily residential.
Would that still require a conditional use permit?
The single-family home would.
If it's a small enough lot even, or small?
Yeah, yeah, any time, we're gonna look at it on a case-by-case basis. So again, we've, we've made those changes consistent with the program HE two B. Accessory dwelling units, so there's been a lot of updates to state law the last five years that really pushes jurisdictions to allow accessory dwelling units, which are commonly referred to as second units, granny units, and to allow them by right. Currently, our code says in certain residential zoning districts, up against the number of standards, you can build a second unit, provided you get a use permit. The changes that are being proposed are many, but essentially, what it is, is provided you meet the standards, you're allowed to build a second unit on your property by right. So wherever you have an existing single-family home, you're allowed to build another one. And we'll, I'm gonna go into more detail in that section, but-
Are you just defining them right now? We're not really-
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just kinda wanting to give a brief recap of each of them, and then we can certainly go into it more at the council's discretion, but I do wanna come back to the accessory dwelling and at least a couple provisions that I'd like the council to be aware of and provide some insight. So the, the housing element talks about encouraging mixed-use development in the downtown area as well as the commercial district, and so, per the direction of the housing element, program HE two G, we're now allowing for residential above commercial, residential uses above commercial uses in all of our commercial district, which is C-one, C-two, and CO. So again, you're wanting to maintain the commercial component, but at the same time, allow for a residential component as well as a permitted use. And so where those were either not allowed or were subject to a discretionary use permit, now by right, you can either convert an existing upstairs to a residential use, or you could build a two-story building and have commercial reserved on the bottom, residential on top, two, three-story, whatever, whatever building height limitation you're working under is fine.
Is there a distinction in commercial between the C-one, C-two, or C-three, or are you, are you encouraging residential above all the commercial zones?
All of them.
Okay.
But you can't just be residential in the commercial district, you gotta, you gotta maintain the commercial.
Yeah, yeah, right, right.
And if you're on the ground floor, like the conditional use permit that we had recently, and want a residential unit in conjunction with a commercial use, that's as a conditional use.
In some areas, you still, yeah, so there's, the code differentiates between building the residential above the commercial, or building it as an accessory to a commercial use. So there's, there's potential opportunities for both, and, but all this is doing is just changing up the situation where you're building commercial above, residential above a commercial unit.
Okay.
And we'll have one of those use permits for you later tonight. Removal of government constraints to housing development for persons with disabilities. So what that's getting at is, you might have someone who has a disability, and they need to build an ADA ramp into their house, but the ADA ramp is too close to property line and doesn't meet setbacks. Rather than having to run them through a variance process and make findings, we can, we can make those accommodations for those folks.
At the staff level?
At the staff level, yeah. And then, and so there's a, there's a new section that's there for you to take a look at, but that's, that's an example of, of what that, what that new code section might be used for. Allow multifamily in the R-two zone. So currently, multifamily is not a permitted use in the R-two zone, R-two family residential zone, but the zoning, the housing element directed us to allow that in the R-two zone, and now we've made that change for your consideration tonight. So that, again, that kinda keeps us away from getting into a situation where we're having to look to rezon land to accommodate the RENA numbers in the state. So staff supports that as well. Emergency shelter development, and I wanna note that this isn't applicable to like emergency shelters that might be established during like a wildfire or earthquake, it's, rather, it's referring to development of shelters for the homeless. And what the state says is, local jurisdictions, the city, we have to identify one zoning, at least one zoning, where we allow it by right. And the previous housing element directed staff to identify the C-two zoning for that use. And so we've defined emergency shelter, we've identified a number of standards, and that is, that would now be a permitted use in the C-two zoning.
So this would be like a halfway house or something like that, that they would-
Yeah, it's defined as housing with minimal supportive services for a homeless person that is limited to occupancy of six months or less, but a homeless person, no individual house may be demied emergency shelter because of inability to-
For six months or less, that was part of it, did you say?
This is, yeah, I think this is coming straight from the state's definition. Then we, supportive and transitional housing type, this is another housing element program, HE three F, it's also to comply with Senate Bill two, and we're, we're required to allow for transitional and supportive housing wherever we allow for any other residential use. There's definitions of transitional and housing and supportive housing that were taken from the state and will be added to our city code. So then, the next one, extremely low-income households, called single-room occupancy units. This is a type of housing that's typically used to support very low-income folks, and this might be a situation where, thinking the example, I'm thinking where I've seen it happen before, is where folks that operate motels have actually converted to single-room occupancy units, where they can rent it out on a monthly basis rather than like a nightly situation, and you have, you may have like shared bathroom or shared kitchen facilities. And so, again, the state requires us to address that, that housing type in our code, and the housing element further directs us to allow for single-room occupancy or SOR units in our R-two, R-three, C-one, and C-two zonings. So again, those changes are being proposed to be consistent with AB two-six-three-four. Farmworker housing, we don't have a high demand for that in the city, but again, to comply with state law, we've allowed for, let's see, for farmworker housing consisting of no more than thirty-six beds in our agricultural zone. We don't have any property that's owned agriculturally, but nonetheless, we've made that change. What we do have is residential zoning, and what state law requires us to do is allow for farmworker housing consisting of six or fewer persons in all our residential zoning districts.
Alone for six?
Six or fewer persons.
Oh, within a single-family home, okay. If that's-
Then we have, we, per the housing element direction, we've created a new section for density bonus, and so this is, this is a tool that'll be helpful in the city developing lower-income housing units. And so you might have a developer who wants to come in on a, you know, on a property, and density limitations say you can only build fourteen units, but he's like, jeez, I'd really like to build twenty units. Well, the density bonus allows for you to exceed the density provisions, provided they set aside a certain amount of the units for low-income housing. So it's a way for the developer to potentially make a little bit more money and develop more units, and then also becomes a trade-off for the city to request that a certain percentage or number of those units be dedicated in perpetuity for low-income housing. It's a very common tool, and I recommend that the city add that to their toolbox. One more, residential care facilities. Again, this is coming from state law as well as direction from the housing element. State law requires residential care facilities to essentially be viewed as single-family residential uses when caring for six or fewer individuals, and so we have to allow those in our residential zonings, and what the housing element directed us to do was to allow those in the, in all residential zoning districts. Further, larger residential care homes, so this would be seven or more, as defined by the state, would be allowed in the R-two and R-three district, but subject to obtaining a conditional use permit. So you would have the ability to say no or yes, but, you know, we need additional parking or, you know, whatever, address whatever concerns that we might have. So that's kinda my overview of the various changes.
I'm just curious, wouldn't some of the, like, a seven-person or more care facility in an R-two or R-three, why couldn't, based on the density requirements and the lot size, why couldn't that be in allowed use?
Well, yeah, given the council has that discretion.
Without conditional use.
It does have a little bit different feel to it than just a standard single-family home or duplex. You know, you, you know, again, you know, you don't know, it might be that you have thirty people living under one roof, and so you're wanting to make sure that there's certain provisions being made for people. It might be that, you know, a residential care home of thirty people isn't really consistent with, with, with the neighborhood or the size of the parcel. So whereas maybe going from six to seven is a big of a concern, I mean, it's opening it up for, you know, seven and more.
I can, I can see how it gets to be kinda slippery where you draw, draw the line, but it does seem that the R-two and R-three are designed for multifamily and that they're... I just love to minimize the number of things that require a conditional use permit for the sake of the public and developers, if they can come in and meet all the requirements in a district with appropriate zoning and density on their lot and whatnot, to avoid too many things that have to come up to the city council level, but-
You know, at some point, I'd like to see the city go through a comprehensive zoning code revisions, and it might be appropriate to maybe identify some, some simple standards to go with those, those residential care homes of more than seven, and provided you're consistent with those standards, you become a permitted use in the zoning. But again, this would become a competing use in that R-three land, where they're really trying to reserve it for, for other uses as well.
And we really have to look at all of our zoning designations, and where are the R-two and R-three zones, and are we creating potential conflicts?
Yeah, I think nineteen eighty-two is the last time we took a look at them.
So, I'm sorry, I need to run through you.
No, no, it's quite, quite long. So again, that's just, hopefully, just a general overview of those changes, certainly happy to answer any, any questions that you may have, but I did wanna take some time to, to go over changes to the accessory dwelling units, and of course, it's gonna take me a second to find this too.
Eighteen, are you eighteen?
So I'm looking in attachment A, and I'm looking at chapter, proposed chapter seventeen point six one, accessory dwelling unit regulations, and for me, it's page eighteen of attachment A.
Is that page eighteen that's on the page itself?
Right. Hope you guys have it all.
Chapter seventeen six one. Okay.
It's after the chapter.
Almost near the end, okay.
So yeah, attachment A, my page eighteen, chapter, proposed chapter seventeen point six one.
It's before the emergency shelter. Okay, why don't you proceed, move.
Okay, all right. Well, okay, so the, this is, this is, there's been, let me, let me back up a little bit. So the, the current code allows for second dwelling units in certain residential zoning, provided you get a use permit. We've deleted all that. The state's made a lot of changes, and so we decided to make it its own chapter. There was enough, enough information there that it really deserved its own chapter. But there was some direction that was provided in the previous code that we've carried over, because a lot of this stuff that's take, state has taken discretion, is like, this is how you gotta do it, and there's not a lot of leeway. But one of the things that we carried over from the previous wisdom of the council in nineteen eighty-two was, you can have, you're eligible to have an accessory dwelling unit, provided your parcel is at least seven thousand square feet. There's gonna be some folks whose lots are six thousand nine hundred square feet, that are really gonna want a second unit for rental income, for their elderly parent, for their kid, whatever it might be. And if you don't have a lot that's seven thousand square feet, you're not eligible for this. Now, let me explain some of the benefits of that. The, some of these lots that are less than seven thousand square feet are in some of our residential subdivisions where parking's already an issue. You're already having on-street parking lots. And so when you allow for these second units to go in- And so, when you allow for these second units to go in, the state really ties your hand as far as requiring any additional off-street parking. If you're, if you're within a half-mile of a transit line, which probably most of the city is, I cannot require you to add an additional parking space, right? So now, you've created additional park, on-street parking demands where it's already an issue. Again, remember, these things are written for LA, San Francisco, San Diego, as well as Point Arena and lots, okay? And so, in the city, it might not be so common to have two vehicles, a boat, an RV, right? Yeah, you know, here, we tend to have more than one vehicle. And so, there's a reason we required at least two parking spaces for every single family home that's built. So, one of the benefits of keeping it seven thousand square feet is, you know, you're, you're limiting the number of parcels to where, where you can have these second units.
Can I just?
Yeah.
Clarification, you're saying if you, if you have seven thousand square feet or more, this new ordinance will allow it by right that you can have that accessory unit? But if you have six thousand five hundred or something, you could still apply for it as a conditional use?
Well, see, now, that's where my brain was going, and I'm gonna get to that one, too. You know, and then also, once you start getting below seven thousand square feet, you know, a lot of times, it's hard for a lot to even support a second unit. So, what, what staff is recommending, and this is just an idea, we keep the seven thousand square foot limitation, it's been on the books for at least since nineteen eighty-two. But if you look at section seventeen, proposed section seventeen point six-one point oh-five-oh, it's on the bottom of page nineteen, it's entitled accessory dwelling unit not complying with development standards. So, it says that if you don't meet the standards like lot size, you can submit a site plan review permit. Site plan review permits are reviewed by the community development director, and they're fifty dollars currently. And I put some findings in there, and provided something was consistent, or provided findings could be made, staff could allow for a second unit on lots that are smaller than six thousand square feet. And the findings are, the project would not be detrimental to public health and safety, so we're not gonna wanna cram something in that's gonna create a fire hazard, for instance, that the project will have no adverse effect upon other properties including unreasonable privacy impacts. So again, you're trying to squash this house in, and you've already got some other accessory structures, and now you decide, decide to build it in a fashion where it peaks over someone else's yard maybe, or, you know, the drainage off the house is gonna cause an impact, you know, I'm just trying to think of realistic ideas, but that the project will have no adverse effect upon other properties, including unreasonable privacy impacts, and then that the parking issue's addressed. So it might be a neighborhood where there really, there is plenty of on-street parking, and it's not really an issue, but if it is in a location where it's already a known issue, we already have our code enforcement officer getting weekly complaints, we might ask that they provide additional off-street parking in that, in certain situations. That the project is consistent with the objectives and policies of the general plan, that granting the waiver will meet the purposes of this chapter.
So that would be discretionary to the planning staff, not necessarily a conditional use permit?
Right. However, if, if either I approve that, or the future community development director approves that, and the neighbor doesn't like it, they can appeal that decision to the council. Or if we find that we can't make findings and we deny it, the owner can then appeal that decision to the council, but again, we always gotta make those findings every time.
Sounds good. Okay, Ron, or, did you want?
That, yeah, that was my main thing I wanted.
Okay. The, the original ordinance had to do with the lot size, which has to do with the amount of open space and, you know, setbacks and all this other stuff, which is why you went to a seven thousand square, square foot property as opposed to a six thousand.
Well, the, the existing zoning code says that you can't have secondary dwelling units on properties less than seven thousand square feet. So that's a current standard that we're carrying over.
But, but behind that, and as I've said many times, you know, these things are based, hopefully, on logic.
Right.
And it seems to me that the whole logic behind it is that you're not filling up the entire lot with house, right? I mean, isn't that like?
I would assume that that's part of the logic.
Yeah.
That'd be part of my logic.
So let's say, for example, you have a seven thousand square foot property with a five thousand square foot house on it, and somehow, they're able to get all the setbacks, so it was able to be built on that property. So you could theorize that, well, obviously, there's not enough room to put, you know, the second thing, dwelling on it. So I'm looking at kind of an overall sort of a thing, which, the principle being that the percentage of the dwellings to the property is the key element that has to be satisfied. So for example, if you have a seven thousand foot property, or in your case, it, what you're proposing is the changes, it could be a six thousand at your discretion, as long as it meets these other criteria, correct, or?
Right, yeah.
So, so let's say that it's a fifteen hundred square foot original house on the six thousand or seven thousand foot property, and then you wanna build another secondary unit. And maybe with the calculations, it looks like, and I think somewhere in here, you had a twelve hundred square foot secondary?
Limitation on size, right.
Something like that, right. So, you know, it, it could work out that with the original house and the size of the lot, and what's legitimately available, that you might determine that a thousand square feet or nine hundred square feet for the secondary dwelling would be more appropriate. So where I'm going with this is, the way you were laying this out before is you're opening up the possibility of you making what could be reviewed as a, an arbitrary decision. And I'm thinking, it might be better if you could scientifically narrow it down to percentages of the primary house, secondary house to the property.
Not exceeding like seventy-five percent of the prior ones.
Yeah, yeah, something like that, yeah. So that way, you have a formula, and it, and, you know, it would be a reasonable, you can work it out, figure out, you know, what those dimensions would be, but it seems to me that if you have that kind of parameter table, basically, then you don't have to make those arbitrary decisions that can be challenged.
So I, I think you're, you're speaking to the, the potential like lot coverage issue, but I, I don't know that it addresses all the potential concerns.
Well, no, no, of course not. I mean, the, the all-street parking, things like that, but I mean, when you talk about second dwellings, the, the thing that you think about is you have this lot, and is it gonna be filled up with building, or is it gonna be like a, you know, a nice arrangement?
Yeah.
And, and of course, you can't do anything with the, with the, the primary residence 'cause it's already there, but you can scale down the other one, and, and, you know, these secondary dwellings are, are aimed at one or more people, but I think in a practical matter, it might be, probably should be no more than two, I would think. And one or two people can live very comfortably in a nine hundred square foot dwelling.
So the, the single, yeah.
Yeah, so I'm, I'm just suggesting that that's another way you look at it, to kind of formalize it.
Yeah.
Okay, I, I think we're getting into, I mean, these are good points to discuss, although I think what I would recommend that we do is primarily look at what is being proposed by staff, and then when we do more comprehensive zoning, and, and staff can look at whether they want to come back with other standards, but I, I would hate to get too nitty-gritty and trying to draft something up here on the dais, it's kinda crazy. We also, I was just reminded, we haven't opened the public hearing yet, so any other clarifying questions for Dusty before we open the hearing? And, see, none, we can come back later. Would like to open if anyone would like to address these proposed zoning ordinance changes to address the city. It gets very technical, but these are important because this is the rules that then everybody has to, has to play by, so we try to be aware of all the different cases and what's, what's equitable for everybody across the board when we adopt ordinances. All right, any other comments? Yes?
Actually, a question for Dusty. Do we have any projects pending on this amendment?
Do we have any projects?
Directly affected by this?
Yeah, there's a, there's a number of folks that are waiting in line to submit permits for second units, that are hoping to not go through the use permit process and are, or rather, hoping to just submit building permits. So, we have, I think approval of this would, would lead to about ten new homes in the next.
And I guess I will so make the motion that we introduce, reading the title, way further reading the proposed ordinance, Amendment oh-eight, twenty eighteen dash oh-three, addressing the number of goals established and adopted well its two thousand nine fourteen housing element, as well as changes in state law.
I'll second the motion.
Any comments, anything I would like to make up here?
Well, the only one, is, you know, just to beat this, this horse to death there, you know, my suggestion.
He's dead.
Now, can that fit into your, your, your thinking, or are we locked into the words that are on this page? If we adopt this?
So, right, so I'm, I'm likely gonna be put in a position where I'm having to evaluate whether or not to allow for a second unit home to, to be permitted on a lot less than six thousand square feet, and, you know, I, I, part of my hesitation was writing that, is like, I don't really want that responsibility. I take, take some comfort in that, you know, any decision that, that is made is appealable to, to you folks. Regarding specifically the lot coverage, I mean, the zoning district does call out a lot coverage, so, I mean, there is a black and white number there that, that can come into play in consideration. But, you know, I don't know that I would, if, if that was the only thing holding back a new home from being built in Wellitz, I, you know, if, you know, I think my decision's gonna rely on more than just that.
So that, that's a very good answer that.
But that number's in there already for consideration.
There already is a lot coverage requirement.
Yeah, and there's a number of other standards, you know, whether your lot, it's on a seven thousand square foot lot or a six thousand square foot lot, you know, I think it's, it's gonna prove worthy for, for looking for approval from the department if you can show a project that's otherwise consistent with the rest of the standards.
Okay, I mean, I'm just trying to avoid putting you in a position where you're going to be making the decision based on, I don't wanna say nebulous, but, you know, something that's not really locked in precisely.
Yeah.
Because you know you're gonna get hammered by whoever you're dealing with, and I was just trying to make it as automatic, maybe not automatic, as, as...
Quantifiable.
Yeah, exactly, right, or formularic, formulaic, or whatever.
But there is a standard already for lot coverage, and I think, personally, I think these other standards address the things that aren't covered by just straight lot coverage, like having, having the parking and not, and not infringing on the privacy of your neighbors. And I, I hope it's clear, also, it's probably a different section, but that, the decision of the planning staff is appealable by either the applicant or the neighbors or whatever.
Yeah, that, that holds true for any decisions we make, yeah. It's not necessarily in every section.
So I think...
As I mentioned to Councilmember Ornstein, I mean, that comment came as staff-friendly and supportive, and, you know, I think, you know, I don't know that you ever get to a full black and white situation, but you can certainly reduce that gray area lot, and it's nice when you have just sets of standards.
Just wanna make your life a little...
To where you can almost just say, if you meet these standards, you can, you can do it, you know?
Yeah.
And not even have to go through any type of discretionary exercise. And, you know, I think with, with staff, you're always, you're always just looking to be consistent with your decisions, and so it's not gonna be arbitrary in that if, if we approve one and deny another, you know, we're gonna have the reasoning behind that, and it's, you know, if it's like and like, then whatever decision we made before, we're gonna be looked to be consistent with that.
So very good, are we ready to vote?
We have a motion?
If we have, yes, motion and second?
No, Jerry, Jerry motion, Dan I second.
Okay, Jerry motion, and Suprema seconded, and I think we're ready for a roll call.
Councilmember Gonzalez.
Yes.
Francis.
Warren Stein.
Yeah.
Yes.
Mary Strong.
Yes. Wow, very good. And Merk Dusty, thank you, once again. Yeah, now we are gonna attack the rest of our agenda. And there are no other ordinances besides the ones we've just adopted. Consent calendar, which of the minutes was pulled?
The eighth.
The August eighth is not on the consent calendar after all.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar without item A, August eighth.
I second.
Okay, any public comment? Any other concerns by the council? I think unless many is involved, we can do a voice, oh, with many involved. So let's go ahead and do a roll call vote.
Councilmember Gonzalez.
Yes.
Francis.
Yes.
Warren Stein.
Yes.
I agree. Mary Strong.
Yes. My understanding is whenever we're approving many, we have to have a roll call vote. If any members of the public are aggrieved by decisions that the council's made, you have a right to appeal. It's generally limited to ninety days from the time that we've made a decision for you to, you know, to make a legal appeal. We are now adjourning as city council and convening as the city planning commission, so that we can hear some planning items, and I guess we're gonna have Dusty come up again. We are on item eight A. We keep, we keep Dusty pretty darn busy.
And our assistant planner, Michelle Johnson, and we've got two more use codes free tonight, and then we're caught up with that, and we have plenty of other things to catch up on. This is, this matter is before the council's consideration, this is discussion and possible action of conditional use permit, application number U eighteen oh-six for Life Ray. This is on a approximately one point one-nine acre lot that's located on the west side of Main Street at its intersection with, with Walnut Street. The reason for the use permit is, the applicant wants to build a single-family home on the property. The property is in our CO, our administrative office zoning district, and what the code says is you can build a single-family home provided it's accessory to a permitted commercial use. The permitted commercial use that's not subject to this use permit, but certainly needs to be established prior to submitting a building permit, is the applicant wants to put up a three thousand square foot commercial office building. The, the use that we're gonna fall under is the business and administrative office, and again, the, the commercial use can change, but it has to be one of the allowed uses in the commercial zoning. The applicant, they, I'll let them come up and explain the good things that, that they do. It's sort of a quasi-business office lab space, and, you know, again, staff's always looking for ways to, to move a project forward that's appropriate. And my first concern was that it was gonna be more like a chemical laboratory, which is not an allowed commercial use. I took a tour of the site and was able to look at some of the equipment they use. None of it looked like stuff that would create a nuisance, whether it was an odor, a smoke, a noise, some sort of nuisance-causing activity. And rather, it was gonna be, fall close enough under a, a, a commercial office space that, that, that we would allow that as a, as a, a, a use that would be eligible to, to then get a use permit and, and support a, a single-family home as accessory to that proposed commercial use. We, we do have a condition on here, recommended condition number one and two, and number one is, is just clearly reminding the applicant that the single-family residential dwelling must remain incidental and subordinate, and, and really is only allowed there because of, of the commercial use that's gonna be established. The second condition is just noting that, again, you know, this really, even though it's a sort of quasi-commercial office lab, you know, that lab, as I've been promised, is not gonna be something that's gonna be creating a nuisance. If it does, then we're gonna be looking to ask the applicant to, to knock off those activities, and if, if that doesn't happen, then, then we're at a point where we're gonna go and revoke the, the use permit. So, really, other, other than just that understanding, there really weren't any other significant issues to discuss. They want to put up a fence. We have regulations for fencing. Condition number three points that out. They're in the Alcoa Spree earthquake fault zone, therefore, certain development is going to require a geotechnical report. So, again, whether we put that condition in here or not, that they are subject to that, but we put that in here to remind them of such. You have a site plan that shows the relationship between the residence location and where the proposed office is. This has gone through our technical advisory committee. And other than those concerns I, I noted, we didn't have any other concerns and are recommending approval of the project. And I should note that the applicants are here and may want to speak as well.
Okay, any certification?
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm looking at, there's like three or four drawings of, of the property. And I'm just wondering, I mean, like one of them, for example, the first one that I see shows the residence in the southwest corner of the lot. And it's a twenty-six foot diameter residence. And then slightly north, or, do you see that, that drawing?
Yeah, I've got it here.
Okay. Is this the correct one?
Well, the report says it's a six hundred square foot dwelling and I do see that there's a number of different versions of the site plan that have been included in your report.
Yeah, yeah.
And maybe the applicant can clarify which is the one that she'd like you to consider.
Yeah, because the other thing is, you have, aside from the residence, you have rectangular buildings, two of them, looks like one's on the west side, one's on the east side near the highway. And inside the buildings are cargo containers.
Yeah, we were asked to hide them.
I'm sorry?
We have, we have the three cargo containers that are up on the lot right now and we were asked to hide them because this is like a lot that's the entrance to the city and
Yeah.
we don't want it to look trashy. And the, the two cargo containers that are closest to Main Street are, are actually inside of the office building. It's taken four months to design because nobody wants to design a building with two cargo containers in it. But we got it in today, we got all of our engineered plans in today. And so, the, all those cargo containers are actually accessory buildings. They have, they're fully weatherized, they have electrical lights, outlets and breakers in it all put in before we came here. And when we started talking with you folks about it at, at planning, they, they really don't want to have cargo containers at this beautiful lot. So, we've been working for months to figure out a way to hide them. And so, we put them inside the building. And then we've got one other one that we're putting inside of a, a greenhouse, which is, we'll, we'll empty that one and bring it in and use that equipment in our lab. So, generally, we, we work twenty-four hours a day sometimes, so that's why we'd like to have a residence, so we can just go to sleep. It's a small little place.
So, so we are looking at a round residence? Is that what the plan is?
Yes.
Okay.
It actually has a little bubble out at the end that has a bathroom on it, but that's it.
Okay, and, and what, what does the surround for the, the buildings that are going to be enclosing the cargo containers, what are they going to look like?
The, the, there's a greenhouse, a hoop greenhouse and there's, there's a big row of...
Right, okay.
...blackberries and so it's going to be hidden there and they'll have a greenhouse.
Okay.
And then the other two are inside a metal office building that's slate roof, it has dark green walls on the outside and brown wainscoting.
Okay, and will the greenhouse have lighting?
I don't believe so, no, no, we're not going to do cannabis, I know.
No, well, I'm not, that's, that wasn't my concern, but it is across the street from residences and lighting could be, you know...
Right, well, there's, there's already streetlights, they're on the lot and they're on all the time. We've got to really figure out what the Howard Foundation's doing because those are our lights, but we don't have an electric bill for them right now. So, we've got to figure out what's going on, where to keep the lights on all the time. It's nice for security purposes, but I think it is annoying, especially on that side of the lot, to have those on.
So, the, are you going to have gates coming off of the highway and also off of Poplar?
Right, we don't, we don't plan on using the main, Main Street entrance. And so, we, it's, it's dangerous.
Yeah, of course.
It's just plain dangerous, so it's, it's much safer to come in over on Poplar.
And, and, oh, I'm sorry.
For both the business and for the residents, it just doesn't make sense using that.
Okay, and what, what kind of, what will the gates be like? Are they going to be mechanical gates, sliding?
Something where people don't go through them, we have a lot of trespassers. And so, you know, it's, I don't want it to look like a farm, so it's going to look nice. I mean, we could, we could go get the artist to like weld some really cool stuff on.
It says it has to be consistent with the zoning code, so I'm sure we have some standards.
But those pointy things might not, you know, they kind of cause a liability if people are trying to crash over them, but I think us, us being there is going to help a lot in bringing down the amount of trespassing. We're, you know, there's a lot going on trespassing now and a lot of trash pickup and we're concerned because we have millions of dollars worth of equipment in those cargo containers. So, you know, we don't really like to...
So, that, that raises another intriguing question. I mean, you're going to have valuable equipment from what you just said. The, the fence, I believe, according to the ordinance, can't be higher than six feet, I believe?
We have a fence up now, it's a four foot, you can't even see it. We did a good job.
Okay, okay, no, but I'm thinking about security. And that doesn't sound much like security.
Oh, the, the building doesn't, there's two windows, there's, there's just one entrance, three exits. It's very simple building, not easy to get into.
Okay, and what are you going to be doing on the property?
We eliminate pollution. We were on the Gulf of Mexico during the BP oil disaster, working with VOCs. We're really happy to be across from Ramco because that's one of the things that we do. For six years, we've been on the Gulf, on the coast of Oregon, southern coast, dealing with the ongoing nuclear disaster coming over from Japan. My husband worked with Reagan on the Star Wars program and creating a defensive shield with frequencies. And that's what we've been doing. And we've also created mobile units that we have installed in a grid across the United States and Europe and in Australia that helped to mediate the amount of contamination that's here. And you guys are at about twice the radiation level than what we are on the Gulf, on, on the coast of Oregon. We've been able to bring that down about thirty percent by operating our equipment on a limited basis in Creekside.
So, basically, you're going to be operating equipment on this site that would remove radiation from the atmosphere, is that, is that...
That's what we do.
Okay.
And we do it, and we also have piece, we, we have a grid of small units. My, my husband developed a battery that never needs to be recharged and we use that as a power source for small mobile units that we installed in a grid across the United States. And it's all interconnected. We don't announce this because...
You just did.
We don't announce this. My, my husband has over two hundred thousand people that follow him on social media. He's been on over a couple hundred TV shows, National Geographic and, gosh, you know, just History Channel. He's, so, he's known as a crazy guy that levitates the cannonball. He, we don't really get into the really important stuff that he does, which is transmutate elements, especially radioactive ones. And especially VOCs, like we did in the Gulf of Mexico during the BP oil disaster. So, we don't announce that because it scares the pants out of people. And if people really understood how bad the radiation levels are, governments would collapse.
So, I mean, I'm just trying, I'm just trying to, to get a good handle on exactly what's going to happen on that property.
You know, I...
That's what we do, we, 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 we use frequencies, we use vibrations, we use something the Catholic Church has known about for, for centuries, which are Gregorian chants is, is as a basis for these vibrations. And my husband knows how to take that and send it around the world and we are so excited we're on a fault line because we can settle things down, because we got a, we have a way of calming things, that's what we do.
I, I want to just interject, but I think we're, we're making a land use decision here as a planning commission.
Well, no, but I'm, I'm, I'm trying to determine what's going to happen on this property and I haven't heard this yet.
And I think our planning and also the fire department are involved in reviewing what's going on to make sure that it is not a safety hazard.
Correct.
And that's, that's who does those assessments.
Well, you know, I can still ask these questions, I need to, I, I need to understand
I understand.
What is going to happen on this property?
I guess I want to know what's...
I have a clarifying question?
And also I want to ask...
Is the item, is the item before us whether or not we're going to allow a residence on this property or we're going to allow the use on the property? Because it's my understanding that the item before us is whether or not we're going to allow a residence on a permitted property.
Right.
So, just to, to clarify, the, the real, the use permit is related to the allowance of the, of the residential dwelling, the single family dwelling?
All right, fine.
What, what staff is, staff was asking the same questions as Ron because it's, it's, you know, you're trying to understand what's going on, you're trying to fit it into a box, you know, and, and like I said, it's a business office. But, but very fascinating activities. And, and I think for, for me, I had the exact same questions that Councilmember Ornstein had. And what I was trying to really figure out is, are we talking about, because our code has something called like a chemical laboratory or something. And, and so when you start, when they were telling me about these things that, that they, they do, I think, oh, well, that could get noisy, that could involve some hazardous materials, that could involve smoke and noise. And the assurances that I'm getting from Nancy is that, that no, you know, we are able to do these things with the equipment that we have, but it's not, it's not something that's going to be generating noises or, and that, you know, your faith is being put in the right place, Dusty, by calling it a business office. Yeah, but, but it, you know...
You've seen what we've got and, and in fact, we, we've offered to go into the schools, we tried to do it before summer was out, to go in and show them how to make one of these power cells, crystal battery that doesn't need to be recharged, a baking soda to cream a tartar and some rocks. And so, that's about the extent of the chemicals that we use.
And, and the course under our ordinance is if you were doing something that is hazardous, the fire department would have to inspect and so forth. So, I think our decision really is the land use decision, based on the zoning, that we are allowing, it's an appropriate use and we need to approve whether the residence can be there. So, I guess Jerry?
In keeping with what you're saying, and again, this is more directed to Dusty, that depending on what is happening there, because if I were a neighbor, I might be concerned and I will take it up for, it'd be your responsibility to make sure that whatever happens on the business end, that it'll be appropriately licensed and allowable by law. Is that correct?
Correct, and if they, if they go so far as to move into a different land use category that's not allowed, then they're going to need either come and rezone the property or cease that use. And we'll respond to either any issues that we see as staff or if we get any complaints from neighbors.
And then I might add that we're five oh one C three, we're the only five oh one C three that is doing elimination of radioactive contamination. And there's an extensive plan that we gave to them very specifically in what we do. And so, it's all open if you want to even review it yourself on the public record. So, it's not like we're hiding anything, we're very open, so.
I'm concerned about the school. Dusty, is there, or John, is there any problem with being so close to a school? I have one person shaking his head, another one standing up.
Based on what they've shared with me, where they're not doing anything on the property that would be considered a hazard to themselves or neighbors' properties. But again, the concern was that, you know, you're doing these types of activities, they're, they're not going to have any hazardous materials or not. Yeah, as far as we can tell, we were good.
We'd like to have science fairs in the parking lot for the kids. I mean, okay, you can be a kid, you can come, so.
Ron?
Yeah, all right, so I, I, this is one big question that needs to be cleared up and it's making me crazy. You, you, you said that one of the things that you do is remove radioactivity, radioactive materials from the atmosphere, is that...
We transmutate it.
What does that mean?
We change it from a radioactive harmful element into something that's inert.
I'm not a scientist, but I watch television, I know a lot of stuff, wasn't it? And, and, but I do know that when you change an element from one state to another, you don't make it disappear, nothing actually disappears. Something is removed from something and that leaves the original thing as something different, but you still have what you've removed. So, it sounds to me, and, and, correct me if I'm probably wrong, if you're removing radioactivity from something, what happens to that radioactive material?
Okay, radio, I, I'll give you a real brief physics, okay?
Gravity is very important.
So, radioactive elements are like white boys on the dance floor, they don't know how to dance, they're going around and hitting everybody, okay? And so, what we do is take this grid that's, that's modeled after the zeolite molecule, which is what's used for remediation of radioactive contamination. It's a, it's a opposite electrical charge from this guy and we grab onto him and then we play mama and we rock the baby. And every person who's ever rocked a baby does nothing different than what we do. Because when you have a screaming, crying baby and you use your voice and you use your rhythm and you rock that baby, you literally change the chemistry of that living being. Now, every radioactive element wants to come to rest. And every ele, everyone will come to rest and the vast majority will become lead. And we, we have independent scientific reports, not from us, people have done this, has taken our work and our samples, and that's what we do. We took uraniumite and in one month, we, we advanced the amount of decay two billion years. Two billion years in one month. So, the process of it, of it coming to rest, so, we don't have a lot of uraniumite out there, we have a lot of plutonium, we have a lot of CsM one thirty-seven, that's a lot quicker and so our...
You say out there in the world.
I'm talking about in our atmosphere, I'm talking about in our atmosphere, I'm talking about across the entire planet.
Yes, but not in your facility.
Okay, this is, this is what we're dealing with. This is what we have as a situation on this planet. So, it's nice that we don't have uraniumite running around in the atmosphere because it's, you know, it'd take a lot longer. But CsM one thirty-seven, which is one of the elements...
Has your question been answered, Ron?
Horn?
Has your question been answered?
Nowhere's near.
No, okay, so, so, so everything is in flux and everything is in change. And especially a radioactive element, a radioactive element is going to change, that is what it does. And when it breaks off and wants to decay, that's where the problem happens. It goes off with daughter products, it has an explosion of energy and if it hits you and you've got that bugger in your lungs, you're going to get lung cancer.
Excuse me?
Yeah.
If I could interrupt?
Well, I know that...
Yeah, I just want to ask, Ron, is there anything that she could explain that would clarify it so that you're always so comfortable with a...
Yeah, I mean, I, I realize that the, some of you want to put this in a box and look
I just don't want to stay here till midnight discussing science.
That's fine, but, you know, I mean, I, I realize that some of you want to put this in a box and look at it as whether or not we approve a residential dwelling or it's in particular a lot. But, you know, I think it's a lot more at stake here, a lot more at play. I mean, it's kind of ironic because right across the street from this property that we're talking about happens to be a plant that a few people in this town are aware was a, was a very big benefit to this community for many, many years and now all of a sudden something happened and it's not so beneficial. And, and for us to sit here and focus our attention strictly on a, a resident... And for us to sit here and focus our attention strictly on a residential property, forget about all these other possibilities that could happen, I mean...
Give us the old Remco plant. We'll go in there and we'll fix it. We will build over on Main Street.
I wanted to hear from Jerry before we move on.
Well, there's one more clarification thing here. And I would be very interested in hearing what your professional expertise is and your education and, you know...
You know, I don't think that we are allowed to ask those kinds of questions.
Really? Really? If somebody wants to come in here into our community... Dusty might be able to help me on this, but the criteria for granting a conditional use permit is, is the proposed use desirable for the public convenience and not detrimental to the public welfare and consistent with the, our zoning ordinance.
I mean, we don't, we don't ask every, every single business owner that comes in here...
I don't think we can really inquire into someone's educational experiences.
Do you have a college degree? I don't think it's... And if Albert Einstein had come in here and asked for permission to have an office to do his theorizing and whatever, as long as he wasn't soft filing any radioactive materials or having any, you know, volatile chemicals that were a hazard, we would probably kind of look at him and say, wow, that's really interesting, but I don't really have a physics degree myself, and maybe it will turn out to be really important, but I don't, I don't feel like we're qualified to go there. And I think it's our job to make sure it's not hazardous. And Jerry had his hand up.
No disrespect, but whether you're a physicist or an alchemist, I'm more interested in listening to, at this point, what the neighbors want to say at this point. And that way, if they have questions of you, then let it roll so that we can make our decision.
Okay. So we are opening the public hearing. Thank you.
And thank you.
There may be some other questions, so be available.
My name is Cynthia Sales, and I live across the driveway from this proposed business project. And one of the things that I have talked with my neighbors about, and we seem to be in agreement, everything's been hush-hush. I've asked, why are those boxes there? Oh, Caltrans is doing some of this. It's part of the realignment, or it's part of the, you know...no, it's not. Now, we hear, you know, we hear sounds during the night. We see people coming and going. We see people with campers staying there. And we're going, what's going on? We have a home that we've been in for 25 years. We would never have bought that home if in 25 years we're going to have something that goes in that we have no idea what they're doing, what they're generating. And I'm a school teacher. Don't tell me that nothing is left behind. No. I'm concerned because when I'm...I was born in 1951, so I understand radiation as being something you want to stay away from. I was raised in San Francisco, so I know about earthquakes, and I know about things that don't help people grow or stay healthy. My husband was diagnosed with MS in '82. He's been healed from that, but he still has physical disabilities. I have physical disabilities. My 80, almost 90-year-old mother lives with us. I need to know that we're not going to have our house lose value. I need to know what's being done for us. Why hasn't this been an open book? And, you know, it's, I don't know where to go from here. I've asked questions and have not gotten any answers except, oh, just wait. There'll be a time. There'll be a time. Well, I'm asking it now.
My name is Craig Sales. We're, like I say, concerned, but I see what's on the ballot for tonight, building a dwelling place. Well, there's one right across the street already built. If they want to buy our house, there's a house already built. We'll move. But we don't know, like I said, what is going on. No answers. You know, the radiation, that's all new. You know, how do you scrape it out of the air and out of people and ground and stuff like this? I don't understand because I don't have that much knowledge of physics and other things that go on. But, like I said, you're talking about having a dwelling. There's one right across the street. It's for sale.
Yeah. I mean, we know that the neighbors on either side...
You have to build it, it's ready to go.
Yeah. We have neighbors on either side of us that are concerned.
They're both concerned, too.
Yeah. I mean, we've got grandchildren. You know, we raised our three sons there, and they're in their thirties now. You know, what...yeah, we want to make sure that things are safe. And where is this material that they're going to be treating coming from?
Where we're transporting, transporting out.
Oh, where? From where? And have they done this by a home before? Have they done this in a residential area? You know, where is, where is the track record for us to follow?
But like I said, this is all about a house. And the other stuff, we'll find out, I guess, later because you guys got to find out from the fire department and building contractors, what, what they're actually doing or where their track record's at in other states. So, thank you.
Is there anyone else who would want to address us on this question?
Can I respond?
Yes.
Yes. What's before the council, this plant, this group, government group, has to be the conditional use for our residents. We went through a great deal of work with Dusty here and trying to make sure that what we were going to be doing in our office was something that was allowed by law in this town. And I am really adamant about following the law. Law is the relationship of one thing to another, and we have a relationship with us coming in here in this community, and I understand the concerns and the relationship with my neighbors. But my neighbors have also come over onto my lot while I'm there and called me all kinds of names because I won't let them cut through the lot. Because I tell them it's private property, and it's not a park, and they need to go around. So, yeah, there is, there is a situation with that particular lot, and people don't necessarily want something there that's allowed by law. And I believe that a conditional use for my residence is allowed by law, and I believe that my office building is also allowed by law. And that's the relationship that this town has decided by creating their law. And I am complying with the law of wills. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Dusty?
So there's, there's a couple of things at play here. And, right, there's the use permit tonight that allows for the home as an accessory to the permitted commercial use. You know, I, city staff reviews business licenses, and one of my key roles in reviewing business license is, you know, what's the use? What, what land use category does it fit in? And is that land use category allowed in the applicable zoning? So what I've heard from some of the council members, what I've heard from the neighbor of the public there, and what I've heard from myself is, is that when I first started talking to Nancy, I, I don't even watch TV. So I don't even have any clue as to quite what she's saying, but it sounds like, oh, that, that could be something that is dangerous and a nuisance to the neighborhood. And so, you know, before we even got into this whole submitting a use permit or the idea of looking to approve a business license, is I had those same fears and concerns and same questions. Where staff has arrived at is, is that, you know, it's, you know, the activities are innocent enough. We don't have any nuisance causing issues. We can't. It's not that we don't. We, I've been told that we won't. There's no evidence that we will. You know, the equipment they use seems benign enough. But, but again, I don't, I don't understand the science, right? But what, you know, we have the same, same concerns and, you know, regardless of what transparent tonight, if that business was established, and again, that's just a business license. We're only here because they want to put a residence to. Is, you know, we will periodically stop by, especially after they initially establish it. And what we're going to be looking for is more of an office-type setting and not expecting to see hazardous materials or odd things going on that would be creating a nuisance or a danger to the surrounding community. And, you know, that's a lot easier for me to say when I don't live next to it, so.
Jerry?
Dusty, and again, this wasn't the neighbors that brought this to me, but I did have, because I think I approached you to say, what's going in there? And I think you said an office complex with possible residents. I thought, okay. But I've had some folks complaining about seeing a mobile, not a mobile home, but a recreational vehicle parked there on a long-term basis, yet we're telling these folks, they can't, they can't...Ma'am, I'm talking. Yeah, we're telling these folks, they can't be there. So today, we're voting on a, whether we have a dwelling unit with commercial, and that's what I'm prepared to vote on today. But I don't want to see people violating our other rules because, especially with, you've said today that you're a person that follows the rules and you're aware of our rules. I want to make sure that's the case because I think that when you start allowing that sort of thing, especially there on our Main Street, it's not a mobile home park. It was a motel and it was a gas station at one point in its past, but at this point, I want to make sure that isn't happening. And then as far as noise, that when you look at the permitted use and all that, I want to make sure. I'm also concerned down the road, not for today, but that, that any necessary licensing or whatever occurs, and that's not for today.
Yeah. So again, they're, they're stuck under the business administrative use type, and if they deviate from them, it becomes not allowed, and we void the business license and take action. Nancy was very clear in her desire to live in the RV and was clearly told that that's, that's not an option. It should not be...I understand that she parks there in the daytime, and, you know, John Sherman, you know, I think we have any issues with Nancy from a code enforcement perspective? We have? Okay. Yeah.
So that's the concern I have.
Okay. Any other questions or comments from the council members?
Can we hear some comments?
Here. Yes.
Larry has a question.
Yes.
I, I feel exactly the way these people feel, that the neighbors, because I don't understand any of it. And I just can't buy into the, you know, all of this. I mean, I just, I'm sorry, you gave a good explanation, I guess, that you, you got, but I certainly didn't get one like that. I, you have to let the neighbors know what you're doing. You have to be open to them. You have to, you're going to be in a community of a lot of people, and you can't do this to your neighbors. I mean, they're the ones that's going to live by you every day. Do you understand that?
I haven't been approached by my neighbors asking me anything. I have had people tweaking and on drugs coming through the lot. I have had people repeatedly coming across from the top down the steps, and we've had to, and insisting that this is where they take their walks, and this is their park. So I don't know, as a private property owner, if I'm required in your community, in this community, to allow people to press cars.
No, no, you're not. That's not what we're talking about. We're talking about...
These people have never come to me. I've had an RV that I have driven it on the lot during the day and leave at night because I need to be on the property to see what's going on. Now I have a KOA wristband here, you see? This is where it's been, okay? This is where we've been, is at the KOA. And so I think that these people can validate that over the last three, four weeks, the motorhome hasn't been there. It's been at the KOA. And we're going to actually move into a trailer, and we're returning the RV. So I understand that there's these questions, but the neighbors come in. Charlie came and talked to us. Charlie, you know, walking his dog across over the property, you know, and...
You're talking about Charlie Clark?
I don't really... Yeah, here, Charlie.
Charlie Clark.
Yeah. So, but these, these people have never come up. They've seen us very often come up and talk to us. A couple of teenage boys came here and threw the place drunk, and we told them they couldn't be on there. I mean, that's, that's the conversation I've had, but these people here have not. And if they want to sell their house, they can, but I think I have a right to build my house. I don't want to, I don't want to buy their house.
Okay. Have you people talked to them?
My husband's gone over there several times, and we've asked, we were asking to move a truck because they were trimming some bushes. That was not a problem, but it's, the everything is...
What kind of business are you in? You here? No answer.
It's not an office complex. They're doing something. They're treating something. Where's that material coming from that they're going to treat? And then where's it going to go?
It's going to be processing metal.
It's just we want to know what they're doing.
We don't have an house.
We don't have an house.
Okay, I think, yeah. I think we need to bring it back up to the council or...
Suprema wanted to...
Yeah, Suprema had just made a comment, and I don't know if that's appropriate.
I'm just thinking that maybe it's time that the council make a decision on the matter.
Can I, can I give you just a little bit of legal advice before you make a decision on it? So in hearing a application for a conditional use permit, you're acting in a quasi-judicial function, and this is a hearing, and you need to make your decision based upon evidence, substantial evidence. And you have the ability to deny the application, but it's got to be on the basis of the evidence that you've heard. A local agency must issue written findings in support of its decision. The record must contain substantial evidence to support the findings, and the findings must in turn support the decision. A use permit may be denied if substantial evidence supports any reason to deny the permit. And the standard is considered whether it is detrimental to the public welfare. And that basically means the nuisance standard, a general welfare standard, is sometimes imposed in a negative form, i.e., the permit will not be issued if the proposed use would create noise, dust, odors, or other undesirable characteristics. So now you've heard the evidence, and you need to decide whether you heard substantial evidence that constructing a house, granting this permit, is going to create a detrimental condition, a nuisance condition. And what you, if you ought to boil all of this down, what you've heard is, is a very unusual use of the property that I didn't understand, and it sounds like most of you didn't understand, and curious neighbors about what's going on over there? What are you people doing? But if you're going to deny this, it really needs to be because you believe you've heard substantial evidence that would support your decision, and you could defend your, your position in court based upon a finding that this is detrimental to the general welfare.
And I'll just take on that. Notice he said only to the building of the house.
Right.
Not to the, the industrial use or whatever use it is. It's only to the building of the house.
The other thing I just would like to add to that is that we have a staff, and that is one of the reasons we, that we're not expected to, you know, go out and do the inspection ourselves or have the fire chief make sure that there are no hazardous materials there. Those are things that we rely on our staff to do, and that's, they have looked at it, and I'm sure in part of the business license for it, that they will look closely to make sure there are not hazardous materials or activities that are detrimental, because that's, that is required by our laws. And I think our staff is very diligent in protecting the public welfare that way. So the fact that it's an unusual abuse, and I think the whole fact that we talk about transmuting radiation, we're not talking about any radioactivity being...
Matt, should we bring it back?
Yeah. So I, you know, I just think the unusual use isn't what is before us, and that as long as our staff does their job, I think, at least I personally feel that's our due diligence.
So I would like to ask a clarifying question of staff.
Very fine question, and then we need a motion.
You, you said that the, the use permit for the, not, not the house, obviously, but for the business, fell under certain allowable categories, correct?
CO some.
Right. There's a number of permitted commercial uses in the CO some.
Okay. Which category was it that this, this fell under?
We're looking to put it under administrative and business.
I'm sorry?
Administrative and business office use type.
Administrative and office building. Administrative and office building, but we've heard that it's going to be probably a little bit more than that. There's some science involved, some, maybe some chemistry, some, I don't know. Do, do you know, when you, in your review, and I'm not trying to put you on the spot, but that's my job, you know, to make sure that all the, the I's are dotted and the T's are crossed, even though it has nothing to do with what we're talking about, you know, the dwelling.
Yeah.
You know, bottom line, if we were to approve this project, and something goes south, they're not going to come look at you. They'll come looking at us, and they'll be looking at the city. So I need to ask these questions, and I need to get, you know, an understanding.
I'm struggling in the same place.
Yeah, I, I understand that, and that's why I'm not trying to put you on the spot, but, you know, what's happening is you're being forced to work inside this box.
Mm-hmm.
And if, if something can fit in the box, then you have to approve it. And what I'm saying is, is I'm not sure that what is trying to be stuffed into the box belongs in that box.
Yeah.
And, you know, you had the fire chief, the one out there, he's, he's our hazardous material expert, and I'm sure that in his, in his inspection, he did not see any hazardous, hazardous materials. And I'm pretty sure that if, if he had a conversation with the applicant, there was no indication that there was going to be hazardous materials from the conversation, but listening to the explanation of what's going to be going on at the business, I'm not so sure what there's going to be there, you know? I mean, it sounds to me like there might be thermonuclear waste or something, I don't know. And, and do we have any assurance that that's-
So, so just to-
Approving their business license.
Pardon?
That's what we're doing here.
Yeah, I got it, John.
I'm sorry.
I know we're not approving, and that's my problem.
It's a process.
And that's my problem.
Could we, could we have John up here to talk? He's been through the thing. Have you been through it?
Let me, let me talk to-
And Dusty, you want to respond to John?
Because I, I think I was going to make the same point that John was making. This could very well be a use permit in front of you that says establishment of a commercial building and a residence. And, and the deal is, is that we want both. And so you're always, you're going to maintain a commercial business space to go along with the residence, because there might be a multitude of different types of businesses that go through this building that they're proposing to construct. There is no building yet. There is no business license yet. Any business license that comes in, we're going to look that it be one of the permitted uses in the zoning. And I'm struggling in the same place in that, okay, you know, I don't want to call you a full-on chemical laboratory, because you're not showing me that that's what you are. And you don't, right, it's just, it's just a unique use type, and, and so, so again, I mean, staff's, staff's always looking to, you know, we have a vacant piece of property that's gone underutilized for a good amount of time. These folks own it. And I think, you know, what people might want to do is, if we approve the business license, they want, might want to appeal that to you, and then, then we're having this discussion again. What, what the plan is, is that what they've shown us is innocent enough to where it can't fit underneath that use type. Myself, the fire chief, and other staff are going to be very interested, once they get set up, to go and take a look at that. It was nice to hear that they're wanting to have an open house and have the neighbors come over, and whatever satisfaction and ease can be made from that accommodation, that's great. As soon as I see something, or John, or any other staff, that involves any type of dangerous activity, just some unknown thing, then no, you're not a business and administrative office. You're building, you know, you're yanked out, you can't do business there. We still have a viable commercial building, that they can move someone else in there to make it an office or something, and continue the intent of, of the code and everything like that. That, that's where we're at with this. That's all I want to share. Thanks.
John?
I understand your concern. We, staff had that concern when Nancy came in initially, but I, really, I just want to remind you that what we're doing here is we're approving a residence as an accessory to an office building. We haven't gone through the business license process. We don't know what's going in that business, that office building at this point. What we know is, it's an office building on a prominent corner, so we've made sure that they understood that we needed something there that was universally usable. So if their business falls out, another business can take that building over. Essentially, there's nothing proposed here about building the residence or building an engineered metal building that's dangerous to the public. The, the step you're talking about, and I understand the concern, and we'll go into it, but the step you're talking about is the business license process. And our municipal code includes all sorts of conditions, right down to the production of radio waves. We will look at all of that, but this isn't the appropriate time to look for that.
Well, it just seems like it's backwards. It seems to me like the business license should be dealt with-
We haven't approved a use, Ron.
Well, well, I'm thinking that before we approve a residence, we should approve the business license.
I'm going to make a motion to approve-
Can I finish my sentence?
Sure. We've heard what your concern is already.
Well, I'm not sure you've heard-
I'm still going to make a motion to approve on the basis of the request that a residence be added on the commercial space at 1040 South Main Street, because based on what I've heard, I think that they've proved their case that they have a legal right to do so, even though emotionally, I understand where they're coming from, and I believe that the business license is the appropriate place to address that.
Motion.
You can finish talking if you want.
We have a motion and a second. And if you want to repeat anything you've already said, I'd encourage brevity.
I just feel like, Ron, we've been really, really patient in allowing you to have the opportunity to understand that.
Oh, thank you very much.
Okay, but there becomes, there comes a point when these people have the right to have the next agenda item heard. I mean, we can't sit here and keep beating that dead horse all night.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, and I think we've heard all the comments that people have, including public comments, and thank you for being here and speaking up. So let's have a roll call vote.
Yes, Gatsimer Gonzalez.
Yes.
Yes.
Aronstein.
Lou.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Nurse John.
Yes.
I would urge you folks, whatever your concerns are, to write, put them in writing, and send them to Dusty, so that when that process comes forward.
And I, I think that you pointed out an open house kind of thing may be a really good idea, too. But those are not part of what the decision was. So we're moving to the next item, which is also sitting as the planning commission, conditional use permit for Kevin Bouvier.
Bouvier.
Bouvier, 1515 South Main Street. So-
Okay. I, I believe what the, what the applicant wants to do to the property is quite, quite clear at this time. So this, this is a conditional use permit number U-18-07. That says all-in-one auto repair and towing. That is not correct. This is the Bouvier Construction Yard. They are looking for, again, for a use permit to allow for a construction storage, construction yard for the storage of large equipment, trailer vehicles, and various other construction equipment on the lot that's approximately 3.14 acres. This property's on the east side of Highway 101, approximately a quarter mile south of its intersection with Bechtel Road. We're talking about the property at 1515 South Main Street. The project site's relatively flat, it's developed with a 20, currently developed with a 23,000 square foot pad, some fencing, some drainage improvements. Access is provided off an existing gravel driveway from Main Street, Highway 101, maybe State Route 20 now. There will be some drainage and road improvements that will be required to support the, the project, and I want to note that, that no equipment's going to be operating at the site. They might turn something on to test it or something, but it, it's just meant to be a, a storage yard for, for heavy equipment and other various construction equipment. The lot is zoned heavy commercial, and it does allow for this use, use upon obtaining a use permit. You have a staff report and some supplementary information to, to help you with your decision tonight. We've also prepared a resolution should you choose to approve the project. And I do need to note some changes to the recommended conditions. Essentially, since we wrote the report, we've gotten some additional comments from Caltrans, who's interested in the driveway approach, as well as the fact that they have an easement for, for drainage off the highway that runs through the property, and they've recommended some additional conditions. And we also received a standard letter from Air Quality Management District, and so I believe Kathy's been able to provide some revised resolutions for the council.
Is this correct, Dusty? I thought it was on 101, but it says State Route 20.
It is. There will be State Route 20.
101 is also-
Oh, I believe it's 20 now.
Thank you.
Well, it will be one after the relief, which, well, no, it is. It is 20.
Yeah, that's right.
That makes sense.
Or South Main Street.
A little inconsistency in the report, but we're clear with where we're talking about.
Did they take, did you take care of the drainage problem?
We have to wait to be approved to be able to do all that.
So one of the, one of the issues is drainage, and you'll know, well, let me go over the revised conditions here.
We'd love to. We have a week off. Can we get this done?
They have a ready for an application in, and sending this approval.
Okay. Okay, Dusty, can-
I'm good, all right. The, so the, we, we, we're recommending deletion of old condition number six, and addition of, of new condition number six that relates to the requirements of the Air Quality Management District. They used to provide, like, comments or conditions that were applicable to the project. Now we kind of just get a checkbox. So rather than pointing out the 20 things that may be required, we just crafted a condition that says you shall comply with applicable regulations as identified in the letter that they provided, and we've provided a letter to the applicant. Nothing, nothing of significance. Department of Transportation, California Department of Transportation, Caltrans, they, they're requesting condition number eight. This is, this is on the revised list that was handed out at the beginning of the meeting. The existing driveway on the State Route 20, Caltrans is asking that that be restricted to right, right turns only, no left turns prohibited, and asks that standard signs be established to identify that restraint.
So, so now on Highway 20, you're not allowed to turn left into it, is that-
Right. I should say correct instead of right.
Is that coming into the property or going out of the property?
Going out of the property.
Right, going out. You can't make a left leaving the property.
Okay.
Correct. And I, and I think that has partly to do with the, some of the heavy equipment that might be coming out of there.
And Dusty, would that be applicable? I get it if, right now, she pulls out in her Toyota Tacoma versus a giant piece of equipment. Is that, is a difference-
Yeah, I think the intent of it is probably for the larger vehicles, but they don't, they don't differentiate. So, you know, of all the things that we have to be concerned about, the Toyota Tacoma taking a left-hand turn out of there, probably one of them. But again, it's Caltrans regulations. They have the ability to apply these standards under this situation, and, and again, we're just capturing their requirements. As a standard, they, they need to complete a standard commercial driveway approach onto the highway, and so that, that requirement's captured in new condition number nine. The Caltrans is aware that there's going to be some drainage improvements that occur on the property, and Caltrans noted that, that they have an easement through the property for some of the, what I imagine is some, some drainage relief from, from the actual highway system. And so certainly any work that needs to, in drainage improvements, needs to be consistent with, with Caltrans' applicable standards and, and their existing drainage improvements. So Caltrans asks that the applicant work with them to ensure that drainage systems conforms to current Caltrans standard plans, and staff will certainly intervene as appropriate to, to help the applicant understand what those requirements are. All, and then it's standard condition, all, anytime you're working within the Caltrans right away, you've got to give an encroachment permit. So those, those are revised conditions to capture air quality management of Caltrans.
Okay. Will there be any issues with noise related to the motel?
So, so again, noise, noise was a concern. We have a standard condition reminding the applicant that, that they need to be consistent with noise standards, the fact that they're not going to be operating equipment on the site. We have an understanding that we, we're not going to have late-night traffic coming into there typically. We don't have an immediate noise concern, but, but again, there is an opportunity for the project to cause noise impact to sensitive receptors, including the motel, and if we get verified noise complaints, first thing we're going to do is ask that they identify measures to minimize and reduce those noise levels to consistent code, and if it continues to be an ongoing issue, then we can always, you know, rebuff the use permit.
Okay, on this, this Caltrans prohibition about only making right-hand turns.
Right.
And, and what this says is that the existing driveway on Highway 20, Main Street, shall be limited to right turns only for ingress and egress. So what that means is, when you're going into the property, if you're coming from the south, heading north, you can make a right turn onto the property. If you're heading south on Main Street, you cannot make a left turn into the property. If you're leaving the property, you can only make a right turn and go north. You cannot go south. So the question is, you're going to have people coming, this, this equipment is inevitably going to be coming from the north, and it's going to be going to the south. So there's going to be the need for left turns at some point. So if I was the driver of the truck, and I knew that I had to take my truck out of this lot, and it goes south on Main Street, I couldn't do that, so I'd go right, and go up to the first place that I could make a right, which would be Bechtel Road, go around Bechtel Road to Brown's Corner, which is a great intersection to get out on, and then hit south. And the same thing would have to happen the other, going in the other direction. So what I'm asking is, this, this condition sounds like it's creating a hazardous condition for the people who are going to be using this property, plus you're going to be adding more, more traffic on Bechtel Road, which is taking it right by, you know, some pretty sensitive properties.
So it looks, so I'm, I'm, I'm familiarizing myself with the letter that Caltrans wrote to, to the department here, and it, what it is, is there's a pedestrian refuge island that's been constructed, and so that's what's resulting in the-
Okay, so you can, you know-
I don't even use that driveway.
You don't?
We pull in between Les Schwab and Napa. We drive back there. We own the property that bridges are-
Existing property.
-bought back there to our new piece of property, and we have a road back there. So seldom few and far between does anybody go in and out of the property that we bought. It's, it's, it's not what we use. So the trucks come in the other one, while the other one. Once in a great while, something goes in or out that, and so it's, it's not.
Okay, so this condition is not-
Not the issue.
Okay, all right.
And it looks like it's not, it's not related to traffic or the location of the driveway. What I'm reading in this letter is that there's a pedestrian refuge island that's been constructed in the center, and so when you, either you're trying to turn in or turn out, you're going to hit the island. And, and again, we always got to look at it from the perspective of, well, if this property sells, and it's not under the same ownership, what we've heard is, is they have an opportunity to use a different driveway that doesn't have that, that issue, so it's kind of a mute point at this point, but if this property were ever sold, and they didn't have that access-
That would go with the property.
Then it goes with the property. So it's still important that Caltrans pointed that out.
Okay. So that is, that concludes your staff reports?
I'm good.
And I think we open the public hearing, and we'd like to address this, including the applicant, if you wish to say anything.
Good.
Okay, questions or comments from?
I, I would so move the recommendation.
I'll second.
You've been seconded. No further comments or questions, in which case we have a roll call vote.
Yes.
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 Yes. Go for it, Jamie.
Sorry, had to sit through this long meeting. Okay, we are now adjourning as the planning commission and reconvening as city council.
Could, could I get a five-minute break?
I think that's a very good idea. So let's try to keep it relatively short, so that we don't have to stay too long.
We need more than a five-minute break.
How about 9:30? That's about, could we-
We're back. Concise it, I want a break.
And we are now at the city manager's report.
Oh, this is going to be brief. The only thing I wanted to report-
Man, she keeps bringing this stuff out. What is that to you with you?
Is that normally, on the second meeting of every month, we hear from, regarding the Measure B Subcommittee, and the Measure B Subcommittee was actually postponed. It was not today. It was not today. It's going to be next Wednesday, the Measure B Subcommittee. And I had a chance, Councilmember Stransky actually notified me that the Board of Supervisors meeting brought up Willetts' ordinance regarding the Old Howard Hospital.
The letter.
Our, our resolution. I'm sorry. I can't. We passed a resolution. The Board of Supervisors briefly discussed it and, in the, in the context of the meeting. And I wanted folks to know that Sheriff Almond, who's the chair of the Measure B Subcommittee, did make several statements regarding our resolution. And he discussed the fact that the Kemper report was due to come out at any minute. And as soon, and then the Measure B Subcommittee was actually postponed for a week so that the Subcommittee could review that report. And that report would then, according to him, be approved, and decisions would be made quickly. And those would go to the Board of Supervisors to then make more decisions. And all this would go very quickly. And then, he made some statements regarding the Old Howard Hospital. And, and I really felt, I, I did let council know via email that, that this had transpired. Since, and I emailed Jed Diamond and, and said I was really surprised that this had happened at the Board of Supervisors meeting, as the board had made it very clear that this was going to be a transparent process. And anytime that this was mentioned, I would be notified. And I was not notified, nor was anyone else. He then also, as soon as the Kemper report, so I notified Jed because Jed didn't know that that was going to be discussed either. And he is our, the District Three representative to the, to the Board of Supervisors for the Measure B meeting. Jed also emailed me the Kemper report as soon as it came out. And I really thanked him for that. And I forwarded it to, I printed it out to make sure that you had it. The Measure B Subcommittee is going to be discussing that next week. And there is going to be a push for some decision to be made, although it was not clear what that decision would be. So, I, I, I really looked at that tape and listened to it for what that quick decision would be. I don't know what it is, but I do, but he did, but Dr. Diamond said that he would, in fact, come to our meeting after, the next council meeting, after the Measure B Subcommittee, and discuss that with us.
Is that appropriate for us to make any comments at this time or not?
Yeah, we, we can. If I could just tag on to Stephanie's report. She's talking about a Board of Supervisors meeting that was earlier in the month.
April 7th. I mean, August 7th.
August 7th. And what did happen at that meeting was that the board unanimously directed the county council to give a legal opinion regarding our resolution and the legal positions that were raised in the resolution. There are a number of them made, and John McAllen specifically, and sort of the chair wanted this county council opinion. Does our resolution have merit? And, and so, after I watched that tape, I contacted the county council and said, say, I understand this is probably taking you quite a while to respond to this resolution. There are a number of points made. I'm hoping it's in the works, and we're going to get it soon. And by the way, the second part of the resolution was a Public Records Act request that asked for a number of different documents related to discussions between the county and Howard Foundation about the proposed use of this hospital. And we're relieved, you know, and when did we receive those records? Well, she called me up. We had a pleasant conversation about it. And I think it, that kind of fell through the cracks. They, they didn't take any action on the Public Records Act request. And I heard some apologies about that, and they're going to get right on it. She's contacted me yesterday and said that she's working on it. Well, the Board of Supervisors met yesterday. And at yesterday's meeting, the CEO's report to the Board of Supervisors recommended that they not respond, that the county council not provide their opinion, the legal opinion about our resolution, because it's premature. That Willetts basically is jumping the gun. There's, there is no approved project yet. No one has approved the Howard Hospital. And so, and so, the county council and CEO are suggesting that they not, they not write a, write a detailed opinion letter on that now. And just kind of wait and see. And so, and then I, so I listened to the, the video or the audio this morning. And, and basically, the, the board agreed with that, that they wouldn't require the county council to write this opinion, and that they agreed that Willetts was kind of jumping the gun, and that we were acting prematurely to request them to acknowledge our land use authority and so forth. And they haven't even made a decision about the Howard Hospital. So, that's what happened today.
So, so what is our recourse?
Well, our recourse is to, is to insist that we get the records that we've been requested. And so, that's what we're doing. And, and I, I should have those soon.
And do we really care what their county council's opinion is of our resolution?
We, well, I think I care, but it's mostly, it's mostly, I think, an internal confidential report that was going to be given to the Board of Supervisors.
But I mean, that, whatever the county council comes up with doesn't necessarily mean anything. It's just an opinion.
That's right. That's right.
And they weren't going to share with us anyway.
Jim, is the important thing that we will get those records?
Yes.
We can't compel them to, to respond to our.
No, we can't. You can. You can go to, the county council told me, look, I don't want to go to court and battle over this. I want to work with you and get you the documents. And I'm working on it.
No, I'm talking about as response to our resolution versus getting the records.
Right. No. We asked them to acknowledge Willetts' land use authority, and that under state law, they have to comply with local land use authority in order to be a licensed psychiatric health facility. And that's something we can take up with the state licensing departments, you know, and, and make our wishes known to the Board, that agency.
Yeah, we don't need the county to say, okay, I agree with you.
Yeah. Yeah, that's one.
I thought in the video of the, I guess it was the August 7th meeting, that it was interesting that Sheriff Almond acknowledged that, at this point, they don't have any other alternatives in play.
Right.
I thought that was kind of weird. And of course, Kemper is not looking at specific sites. He's just talking about how many beds and da-da-da. So, how they can come up with a quick fix, other than what Sheriff Almond clearly wants?
It was also argued that all these naysayers are doing is, he's saying the project, why don't they identify a better place? Well, that's really not our goal.
So, I guess as individuals, at least at this point, people certainly can weigh in to the Measure B Committee. And if something goes to the board, we should be notified of board agenda items that are relevant so that we can attend.
And if anyone's interested, that, that Board of Supervisors meeting is available on YouTube. It is the August 7th meeting.
You sent that to us, right?
Pardon? And I sent it, I sent it to council, but to anyone else out there who's interested, the pertinent information is approximately 1 hour 5 minutes into the tape.
It starts a little before 1 hour 5.
It's just a little bit before?
Yeah.
And yesterday's meeting is also available. It's item 5E under the CEO's report to the Board of Supervisors. You can touch that video if you want.
Is, is this Kemper report public knowledge?
Yes.
Yeah.
So, anybody can read it?
Yes.
And that will be discussed at the Measure B.
No, I understand that. But I'm just saying that, that it's paid for by taxpayers' money.
It's actually paid for by Measure B funds.
Yeah. Well, it's taxpayers' money.
Yes.
It is.
So, process-wise, did we get it in advance of them presenting it to Measure B? And technically, it's?
We haven't received it at all. Jed Diamond forwarded it to me.
Oh, okay.
As soon as he got it, he forwarded it to me, and I appreciated that. But no one else has offered to share it with me. But Jed, as soon as he got it, gave it to me.
Well, that was his job, was to do that.
Yeah, I watched the video too. And then I was just briefly flipping through here, and I noticed that it said that Howard Hospital only accounted for 11% of the potential patients, and that UCAIA had the bulk of it, but that this report made a recommendation that, that a hospital be placed in UCAIA or Willetts, rather than on the Mendocino Coast District, because there are so few people coming from there. And then, if you go to page 37, it talks about how construction of a new building, which I'm sure is going to play into their decision, is going to cost between $5 and $6 million, while using an existing building, which is the argument that Almond made before the Board of Supervisors, is going to cost $300, $300 per square foot. Although, there's been a study on Howard Hospital. It says the actual cost, according to this other estimate, is going to be 11.2 million. And also, another one that says it's going to be 14.9 million. So, that's well over the cost of a new one. So, I have a feeling it's going to come down to some money. So, it'll be interesting. It could be that Howard Hospital turns out to be more expensive than the new facility, and then that would take it off the table.
Now, I understand how you can get so much done.
That's interesting.
Find the.
She's going to be in there all along.
We should go on with our.
Yeah, that's, that, that's all I wanted to say.
Oh, that's the only thing?
Yes.
Okay. All right. So, we have the other administrative departments. Would any of you like to make a report?
I don't believe there are any reports today.
I was wondering if.
No.
Oh, I just would say, I had, I had a very pleasant phone call with Chris Neary this afternoon. And I had suggested to him the name of an auditing firm in Santa Rosa to serve as our joint auditing firm. And he thought that was good. He has experience with that firm. So, I think we're going to go forward with bringing out. Chris and I are going to go down and meet with that auditor, and then we'll be coming back to you.
I had a conversation with Denise Rose today, I guess it was, or, yeah, it must have been today. I can answer it. And, and she was, you know, we were both saying, what do we need to do to get going? So, I'm glad that's doing it. Okay. And no human resources, and that's it? Okay, public safety, and ding, 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 ding.
I have nothing.
Oh.
And Chris has not, I'm sorry, she's not expressed.
Okay. All right. And we've certainly heard a lot from community development. Do you have anything else? Just updates? No? Neither of you? Nice article about you, John, in the paper, about your retirement. It was nice. Okay. Under Public Works in Engineering. You've been very patient. This is item 10D, which is in our agenda pack.
Suzanne Litzis, Assistant Engineer. So, what's in front of you tonight is a recommendation that the outlet creek that's measuring creek flows near our wastewater treatment plant, that a new USGS gauging station be installed and maintained there instead of the weir that's currently in place. The weir basically has a big hole in it as of the spring. And so, it's no longer functioning properly. That's a big problem because we are permitted to discharge one part tree of wastewater at maximum to 10 parts of creek flow. So, we really have to have a good measurement of the creek flow when we're discharging. So, we, we have to solve the problem to be in compliance with our permit. The weir is kind of an old way of measuring creeks. People don't really like to put them in anymore. They're, this one in particular has been identified by several regulating agencies to be a fish passage barrier. And so, it's not recommended that we repair and invest more money in something like that. It's also just in really poor shape, despite the hole. So, what USGS can do is come in and put in some pretty non-invasive pieces of material, a couple of pipes, really, and a little bit of electronic equipment. It's pretty standard. They have these stations all around the United States. Again, no structure, very non-invasive. They can put it in for something like $14,000, $15,000. And then, they would also, what this is proposing is that they would also maintain the station. So, that means if any equipment breaks or there's any malfunction, they actually come in and replace that. And that's part of an annual fee that the city would be paying. And they also, what I think is probably one of the best parts of it, is they come and calibrate the creek bed about every six weeks or after any large storm event. And so, we get really good data. It's just probably the best way that we could really measure the flows. The weir is, it's just, it's not possible right now with that.
All right. Any questions?
Yeah, I just have.
Jerry first?
Beat you the punch, Ron.
Go ahead.
I get it that we would abandon this and we would go with USGS. But do we need to do any tear down on the existing weir? Or do they just punch some pipes through and?
Right. That's a good question. So, the thought now is to actually move the measuring location closer to the point of discharge. So, it's gonna, it's probably going to be about 200 feet downstream of where the current weir is, but upstream, far enough from the discharge point so that the discharge doesn't actually interfere with the measurement. So, no, to answer your question, the weir doesn't have to come down. It probably should at some point for other reasons. And you'll probably hear about that at some future time.
Is that something that our local staff can do? Or is that something that we have to contract to tear down?
We'd probably have a contract to tear it down.
Okay. That's.
All right. Just for, for accuracy, I believe in the first paragraph of the summary of requests, you, in the second, in the middle, discharge is regulated so it does not exceed one part of wastewater to 10 parts of creek water. I believe that was changed to 1 to 100.
No, no, no. It was changed from 1 to 100 to 1 to 10. It's, yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry. That's.
It did get changed. But it is.
Yeah, I had, yeah, it was backwards. The, the proportion of water is greater.
Yeah.
Right. Sorry.
It's okay.
I, I would make the recommendation to do the recommended action, please.
I'll second that motion.
Moved and seconded. And we do need to open a public hearing in case anybody out there would like to address us. Seeing none. Good job. Thank you for that explanation. And I guess we're ready for a vote. Roll call vote, please.
Yes. Councilmember Gonzalez.
Yes.
Yes.
Ask him, Hornstein.
Yes.
Yes.
Fair show.
Yes.
Good night, Suzanne.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Get some round.
Nice job. Nice job.
It was a fascinating meeting, right? Okay. And now, we have city council and committee reports. League of Cities.
Met on Friday. And Eureka. But in essence, I handed you guys the.
Video.
The, the, not the video, but the.
CD.
CD with the information there.
Is that a CD?
It was a DVD.
It's a DVD.
CD.
CD. And then, the other thing we approved was a state director representative from our chapter. And that would have been the mayor of Lakeport. And one of the council members from, from Lake, from Eureka is our second vice president. And I had some notes, but I found them. And just to give you some names, Mariah Turner from Lakeport is the division state board director. And Austin Allison from Eureka. And other than a presentation on the arts thing that you have there, and that was it. And there was no legislative stuff. They'll be sending some stuff through because apparently the conference is coming up. And so, that would be it there.
Okay.
MCAG met on Monday. And it's one of the few meetings that happened on the 20th of this month. And they're always on the first Monday of the month. It was very interesting because it was the same thing that we went over today with the housing, but it was for the county. And the county's saying that the housing needs for 2018 to August 27, 2027. And, um, the county saying that the housing needs for 2018 to, uh, August 27th, 2027 is Willets needs 111 house pieces.
City of Willets or the?
Yeah, City of Willets. Um, an interesting, the interesting discussion, the most of the discussion was on the county was, does the state give you, um, credit for the fires we've had and the, um, houses and structures that were burnt down? And they do not, or that's was the consensus of, of the people that were giving it. Another interesting thing, it was over 300 residents that has burnt already in Mendocino County and there's only been 80 applicants to rebuild. And, um, that, uh, the fire, you know, everybody's really concerned about the fire thing and in fact, Nash Gonzalez was the one that, that, uh, that did the presentation, did a very good job. And, uh, everybody on, about the housing thing is just in limbo because they think that they just, the state just throws out numbers. And, um, how, how is anybody ever supposed to be able to come up with it? And, uh, but I thought the fire thing was very interesting because the state is going to have to make some kind of decision on this with as many houses that are going up. And, uh, I mean, not just in Mendocino County, but all over. And, uh, but they don't seem to want to do it. That's just what we went over, which is the housing for the Mendocino County.
Interesting. Okay, um, EDFC met on August 9th, the day after our last meeting. And, um, I think of relevance to us, the main thing was to, um, there is a, the, the direct public offering that was, um, a lot of local people invested in a year and a half or two ago, uh, that was to fund the wool mill in Ukiah. Um, the wool mill has hit some really big delays, mostly not their own fault. Uh, they had some really bummed equipment. Anyway, they are way behind on reading their loan repayment and, uh, the information is that EDFC is taking responsibility for, uh, will repay investors as the contracts require them to, but they're not collecting the money in a timely way yet from, um, the wool mill. And the wool mill folks are struggling to catch up as much as they can, but it's, it's behind schedule. So that, uh, quite a few people in Willets did invest in that and I think, um, if we hang in there, we'll eventually see that it's a good project. And, um, so that was one thing. And then they've continued to do a lot of, um, budget issues and trying to get loan monies responsibly loaned out and so forth in order to improve the budget because right now they, they have a lot of, um, funds that aren't loaned out. So any business people out there that want to seek loans?
Hey Matt, it's worth, uh, Matt, it's worth mentioning that there was a feasibility study, um, that EDFC did on, I believe it was a slaughterhouse.
Yes.
And that there is a need in our community and it could be a profitable business.
Yes.
And that EDFC would be interested in funding, uh, an entrepreneur, um, if they could find an entrepreneur that was interested in that type of business.
Yeah, that, that item has been sort of on hold for a long time because they did the feasibility study. They said it's a, looks like a good project. They need an applicant who's willing to, you know...
What, what kind of business they missed that?
It's a, yeah, a low, um, low volume slaughterhouse. It would be...
Okay. Thank you.
Not very attractive business, but a necessary business.
Yeah, would really serve our local community. Anyway, so far there has not been a suitable developer willing to take that on.
When they originally did the thing, it was to find a site.
I, I think there are, you know, anyway, that, anybody interested in that?
Okay.
That starts with EDFC. Uh, okay, so moving on, what did I just do? Um, solid waste, I don't think we met. If I understand...
September 27th.
Yeah, okay. MTA, anything to report?
Uh, just that I was, uh, approached with an unmet need here in Willets. A few people asked me about, uh, request to MTA to have a, a short bus provided that would pick up, uh, students in front of J.D. Red House and transport them to Equal Peak School because Equal Peak had changed their school time. So that was an unmet need. That's it. That's about it.
Okay. LFCA?
Well, not, met already earlier in the month, will meet in September.
Okay. Um, Finance Committee, we had our very advanced session yesterday, which was very, very useful, let's say. Went over the budget, but that's turning out to be the business of the whole council rather than a subcommittee. Uh, Water and Wastewater, I don't believe there's any.
Didn't do it.
Um, we've, Ed, isn't going to meet until October sometime. Caltrans is meeting on September 5th. So Wednesday because normally it would have been a Monday, but that's a holiday. So that's the next Caltrans meeting. Measure B, we've heard about.
And I'll be attending the Measure B meeting. Will you be going to?
Yeah, I'll go.
That's very good.
That's next Wednesday.
That's good. Thank you. I'm so glad you're attending. Um, nothing to report on with the Lake Fire GPA and nothing on any other boards. Visit Mendocino, you guys are busy.
Uh, visit Willets.
Visit Willets.
Uh, we're about to decide on a logo for Willets. I'd be happy to pass it on to Stephanie as she, she can share it. Uh, the next meeting is on September 5th and September 19th, 4:00 PM to 5:30. We typically meet in the council chambers, but it sounds like the next meeting, we may have a conflict of space with Caltrans if that happens. Uh, Kathy, I assume that we'll be able to use a community center? No. We'll figure things out. But there is a meeting on the 5th and, uh, if there's a conflict, there'll be a sign here redirecting people where to go. And, uh, yeah, I'm just really pleased with the outpour, the number of people that are showing up at the meetings and wanting to get involved, whether it's a project that we already have slated or wanting to add some projects and not just coming with their ideas, but coming with their resources and, and the will to roll up their sleeves and get some things done, which is exciting for our community.
Ryan, well, I used to call that a duocracy. People that are doing things, they're bureaucracy. I like that. Uh, okay, uh, any council member reports and recommendations?
Um, I was told that, um, at the MCOT meeting that, uh, the Trail, the Great Redwood Trail was going to make a, um, an update on when it was going to make the transfer from the previous railroad. And, um, it was supposed to happen today and Loretta was going to have it. Um, and, uh, I guess we're going to get it to the next MCOT, but you can get it also by calling Guire's office and, and finding out what it was. But it happened today.
Okay. The Great Trail is a good...
The Great, yeah, the Redwood Trail, it's, they had, uh, I guess they changed it because it was supposed to be in February or, or March where they were going to make the switch over from the two railroads, do away with one and, and have the other one. And, uh, so they made a change in that and he was supposed to get it out to everybody concerned today, or he was, yeah.
And then I'd like to announce, I mentioned it before, but this Saturday at 9:00 AM we'll be having the Willets use soccer parade. We typically have about a thousand people attend. And, um, in addition to our typical festivities, we are, uh, showing our appreciation for first responders, um, in particular, the Brook Trails and Little Lake and Cal Fire. We've asked them to be on hand. They're going to speak briefly. Uh, Brook Trails will be talking about, uh, fire safety and, uh, Chief Wilkes will be talking about, uh, what folks can do to help support our local firehouse as it will be on the upcoming measure. We've asked teams to, uh, make banners. So they'll be, not only will they be carrying a sponsor banner, but they'll be carrying, um, a banner made by each team that the kids will participate. And they've been encouraged to write notes that they can give. Uh, we'd love to have the Willets Police Department there. I left a message for, uh, Highway Patrol and, uh, the Sheriff's Department. So anybody who can show up.
That's at the soccer field?
Yeah, at 9:00 AM on Saturday.
On September 8th, you just jogged my memory, uh, there's going to be a fire safety workshop and presentations and whatnot in conjunction, I understand, with the Roots Power, um, big deal that they do at Roots and at the Recreation Grove. So I think that's most of the day on September 8th, which is good. And, um, now before we all get to relax, some of us have to go into closed session. It's supposed to be a very short closed session.
Yes.
So, uh, we are adjourning to close session and we'll report out if there's anything to report out.